Good evening, welcome to the Herndon Town Council Public Hearing, April 9th, 2019.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to our Town Council meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask that you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I am always so pleased to see such a packed house, especially when it is 75 and beautiful outside, so thank you for coming out this evening. We have several presentations this evening, which we are pleased to be a part of, and we will go ahead and get started. Our first one is a proclamation to recognize National Autism Acceptance Month. And it is, well, before I read that, I'm going to, I'd like to recognize some of our special guests who are here this evening for this presentation. We have Elizabeth Fossler, who is the Director of Growing Kids Therapy Center, Kelly Berg, and Julie Randall, who I believe worked with Elizabeth over at Growing Kids, Ian Norgling and his parents are here. Ian is a member of our Youth Advisory Council and a Herndon resident, Ryan, Kevin, and Loretta McMahon, Tom, Susan, and David Prue, I hope I said that right, Juan, and Juan Farm, Emma, Donna, and Robert Budway, Ben, and Bertra McGann, Megan Parkinson, Janine Abalos, and we have Senator Boisco is here with some regards from the General Assembly, and I believe we have our delegate Samira, and Jenny Vips is here representing Supervisor John Faust's office, so welcome. It is with much pride and honor that I read the proclamation into the record. "A Town of Herndon Proclamation, Proclaiming National Autism Acceptance Month, April 2019. Whereas autism is a motori-sensory difference experienced by children and adults, some individuals are able to speak and others are not. Speech is not an indicator of intelligence. Autism is a lifelong condition. Skills and quality of life are improved by intervention and support services, and whereas people should presume competence in autistic individuals. This means believing autistic individuals can and want to learn. This means providing quality education and intervention. And whereas individuals want to be included in the community, this means ensuring access and acceptance. Autistic individuals are your community members, your neighbors, friends, and family, and Town of Herndon proclaims acceptance and welcome for autistic individuals in our community. Welcoming autistic individuals comes through education and community support. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaims April 2019 as National Autism Acceptance Month in the Town of Herndon, and urges all employees and residents to participate in our municipality's National Autism Acceptance Month activities in order to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism." Every year, this is one of my very favorite proclamations that we do, for many reasons, but I want to make sure everyone here knows I should have said, "Hi, Delegate Samira, glad you're here, I told you guys he was coming." This one is really special because two years ago, these students from Growing Kids Therapy Center wrote this proclamation entirely on their own for the town, and it is with great pride that we are sharing it once again. So, are there comments from council on this item before we keep going? Mr. McKenna?
I've had the great pleasure of working with Ian Norgling on the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, and I just want to intimate a story that happened last February. Ian, we had a meeting with the Chief of Police, the Herndon Youth Advisory Council is a group that, of students that want to learn about local government, and the Chief of Police had us at the police station, and we were going around the room, and Ian asked to speak, and when he did, he was with his cousin, Gina Conger, and created a pamphlet about first responders and how to act with them around people who have autism. They react differently. Ian had a negative experience on the West Coast, and what he had presented to the group and to the chief made such an impact that he spoke to the roll calls in regards to how things should be handled, and it helped change protocols with the police, not just with being aware of physical reactions, but also in case something does happen. So I couldn't have been prouder that night, but more importantly, the fact that you stepped up to be a member of the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, you, we walked in there with 12 strangers, and you have a lot of friends, there's, several kids got back to me and they couldn't make it, and they were saying how wonderful and proud they were of you, and how smart you were, and the thoughtfulness that you had, and you're an amazing person, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs?
I think I'll just kind of go down, I think everybody might have something to say. Mine is less personal, but I am delighted to be able to help with recognition of Autism Awareness Month, and I want to congratulate our local Growing Kids Therapy Center for their work supporting individuals with autism. We know now that autism affects many individuals and their families, possibly as many as 1.7% of the population is what I got off the internet. That means that most of us know and love someone with autism. I encourage everyone to seek out information and educate themselves about autism, and learn how to help improve the lives of our fellow citizens, whose well-being, financial stability, and equal opportunities deserve our support.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. DeCall?
Well, I was actually doing some researches about autism this afternoon to know more and what exact the statistics is, and I found, you know, very successful and inspiring people also, I found they have autism. What does that say is, it just, you know, maybe difficulty in social interaction and communication, but does not make people less intelligent, right? So with the proper support, inspiration, awareness, and acceptance, you know, the autistic people can create equal impact in this society as the other people can do. So, we wholeheartedly support, inspire, and we want to create this awareness for autism. And I'm very happy that Town of Herndon is proclaiming National Autism Month, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Yes, I love that we call this Autism Acceptance Proclamation, right? Because, and I love that we have, we're really lucky in Herndon, we know this for a lot of reasons, but we're certainly lucky that we have Elizabeth Fossler and her leadership with her organization Growing Kids Therapy Center. Elizabeth is a well-renowned speech pathologist and teacher. She has recruited literally all over the world, and travels often to places as far as New Zealand, and South Africa, and close to home in Atlanta, to share her services and her gifts with the world, and with folks that have autism and limited or no verbal skills. And it's just, it's incredible, the work that you're doing in our community and beyond our community. I'm thrilled that you are, again, back to the community, that you offer so many things for the rest of us to come and be a part of it, right? And to really live and breathe not only awareness, but acceptance of autistic individuals. I've had the pleasure of coming to your casino night recently, and the silent disco, right? If you've never been to a silent disco, my company actually has hosted silent discos where you wear a headset, which is great for lots of folks, right? In all different situations, this can be great, because there's folks who don't want to listen to music, or they don't want to dance, or you have various, whether different generations, where they want to listen to different music, you can have three different channels, you can dance with someone listening to a completely different song than you, but you're still all together. And so, they hosted a silent disco night, the other night was a blast. So again, thank you for just helping us, and really being part of the community, and welcoming all of us, and just helping to educate us on what autism means, and that we're lucky to have these individuals in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. DeCall?
Yes, and thank you again for your participation. I think this council is certainly a reflection of the community, and this community has really, for me and for others, emerged as a welcoming, inclusive community, where everyone's welcome. So thank you for stepping up.
Thank you. Man Vice Mayor?
Thank you. There we go, did I get it? CBS Sunday Morning must have known this was Autism Month, because they had an absolutely awesome little segment Sunday morning, and I'm going to share it with Elizabeth, so she can share it with the group. And it was this little five-year-old autistic boy's birthday, and his mom took him to the skate park when no one was there, and here comes a herd of middle school kids, and you never know what's going to happen with middle school children. But the leader of the pack ended up befriending the little boy, and they sang "Happy Birthday" to it. It's a heartwarming story of acceptance. And now these kids in this community are hanging out with the little boy. They never knew him till they met him at the skate park, and so now they all have something in common, and they've become good buddies. So I'll share that with you, so you can share it with your group. Anyone else wants it, just send me an email. And, yeah, that's all on that. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I concur with my colleagues. We have worked very hard over the past several, several years to ensure that Herndon is a hometown where everyone feels welcome. And I would, I used to say, and when I would talk about this, you know, no matter where you come from, what languages you speak, what you look like, who you love, and I've added to that, or how you communicate, because we are grateful to have Growing Kids Therapy Center here in the town. It offers such a wonderful resource for not just the young adults who are dealing with autism, but their families as well, because it's such a support system. And it's so key, I remember, it may have been Ian or Ryan, I can't remember, one of them said, you know, "Not awareness, acceptance." And that's a really, it may not seem like a big deal to change that word, it's really huge. Like, we are aware of autism, but in Herndon, we accept it. And Ian has done a great job in particular, I just have more experience with him through the Youth Advisory Council, but the piece that Mr. McKenna spoke about with the HPD kind of education piece, that has become part of their training program. I see some of our officers in the back nodding. And we have commended some of our officers, and I know it's last year's Valor Awards, for how they were able to handle a situation with a young adult who was on the autism spectrum and was very volatile, and it could have gone a lot of different ways, but thanks in part to what Ian has shared with our officers, that it had a good resolution for everyone involved. So, thank you so much. I'm going to introduce Elizabeth. She's been practicing speech-language pathology since 1995, is that right? And her greatest joy is working directly with clients and families. So she opened her full-time private practice, Growing Kids Therapy Center, right here in the Town of Herndon. In 2013, she began using low- and high-tech augmentative and alternative communication, teaching students the purposeful motor skills to spell and to be able to communicate. She's going to demonstrate some of that, I think we're going to hear from some of the tribe, is what they call themselves. So we're glad to have you here, I'd like to invite you forward, and if you'd like to say a few words, then our Senator Boisco is here with the presentation as well. So Elizabeth, come on down.
Thank you so much. This is, it's such an amazing opportunity to stand before you all, and for the third year in a row, for you all to embrace and accept our community members who are autistic or who have other disabilities. Lisa has been actively involved with Growing Kids, we've had Jen Boisco come visit us, Jen Baker frequent our social events, and that's really huge. And so, three years ago, when Mayor Merkel said, "We'd like to do an autism proclamation," and we looked at samples out there, and they just didn't really reflect who we are. And so, giving the tribe the opportunity to write this proclamation that you all just heard was huge, because it is their voice. They are your neighbors, they are your loved ones. And what's really great for me is I'll often get a text or a Facebook message that says, "Hey, I saw Ian at the farmer's market," or "Hey, I ran into Tom at Safeway." It's like star sightings, you know? Which is really great, because it's one thing to, you know, that awareness, we are aware you're here, but to be welcomed is a whole nother matter, and that is what Herndon is. I'm a resident of Herndon, I live right down the street on Spring, my business is right over here on Grant, we're getting ready to start another evolution of what we do, which will also be nested in Herndon, and we're here for a reason, because we are accepted and we are embraced by this community, and that makes all the difference. So thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing to be community partners with the Town of Herndon.
Thank you. Elizabeth, did some of the tribe want to communicate with us first, before we do the presentation with Senator Boisco and Delegate Samira?
Sir?
Thrilled?
Thrilled. Two. Two. B. Here.
I am so thrilled to be here.
Be here.
My?
My? Friends? Friends. Me. Ne-
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 Neighbors?
Neighbors. Felt.
And.
And. Community. You. Have.
Me.
Me.
Like?
Like. Two.
My friends, neighbors, and community, you have welcomed me like...
Like. No.
Like no one?
Else. Ever?
Has.
Has. Got.
My friends, neighbors, and community, you have welcomed me like...
Like. No.
Like no one?
Else. Ever?
Has.
Has. Got.
My friends, neighbors, and community, you have welcomed me like no one else ever has.
Thank you. Thank you. Ian, there really isn't a nicer thing you could say to your mayor and town council, and your neighbors. I might.
Ryan may need to work for a second.
Sure.
Do you want to do that?
Certainly.
Do you have any families too?
Anyone that would like to come forward, that's interested, we would welcome them.
Okay.
Please.
Oh, this has really been an amazing experience. I should explain to you that we used to live here, in the area in Loudoun County, actually, and knew Elizabeth, because she was Ian's first speech therapist. And she did an amazing job for the next six years that she worked with him, and I mean, almost daily she was working with him, or some of the students that she trained, but we weren't doing this. She was doing traditional speech therapy, and believe you me when I tell you I can speak, I think, for some of the other parents, we have tried everything. You will do anything for your children, especially when you see them struggle, and you know they're not happy, and they aren't being met, or their needs aren't being met, especially in schools, but that's another subject we're not going to talk about. I will just say that when we made the decision to move here, it really wasn't ours, it was Ian's. When he was given the opportunity to learn how to spell, to communicate with Elizabeth, and he met all the other young men and women who were learning this, and it was a small number, but he said, "I need to be with them. They are my tribe. This is how I will build a community. This is how I will be an advocate for other, non-reliably speaking autistics. If we're here in the nation's capital, together we will be a force that we'll be reckoned with." And then we found Herndon itself, which I used to come here to go to Jimmy's, I didn't know. I didn't know what a great town it was, except I knew Elizabeth had settled here, and we didn't want to stalk her, but we did know, and Ian again, driving this, his ship, said, "We have to be close enough, so that we can be part of this community. Could we show them what needs to be done?" You've made that possible. I get a little emotional, but I thank you for welcoming us as well. Like you said, it's not just about the kids, the parents, the amazing activities that families can do in this community, the support, the wonderful, everything. Thank you, Town of Herndon. Ian said it last time we were here, it's become our home and our heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to come forward before we invite the senator? Sure, please do.
I know Ryan's a little shy, but I just wanted to say thank you to primarily Elizabeth, but also to all of you as well, because, I mean, we learned through Elizabeth and through the town here as well, that, you know, one of the biggest problems we have in the world today is intolerance of all kinds, and I think this is one of the examples of, you know, how to be tolerant of different ways of communicating, and different ways of being of all kinds. And I think it's important to share that with you all, and the more people that we have in the world that are tolerant of others of any kind, shape, form, means of communication, whatever, abilities, that's what's important in the world. You ready to talk now? Maybe he's not so shy. Okay, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
T.
S. R. E. E. Y. O. Here.
Wait, three. Three Y.
I. E. A. R. S. Ten.
Wow, three years.
We're just getting started.
Maybe. Maybe not, maybe, maybe not. Okay. Well, I'll say, I don't live in Herndon. I've worked with Elizabeth for five years now, and I understand how hard it is for other communities to welcome this, this change. And if it's not hard, it's hard for us, if it's not hard for them to accept, it's, anyway, I'm confusing my words here, because I'm a little emotional now. This town makes it look easy, and I don't know why the rest of the world hasn't caught up with this. And I've always said to my friends and my family that when I know someone who's from Herndon, they love Herndon, more than anything, and I can see why. Three years, as Ryan said, wow, three years that we've been making this happen, and every year, it's more and more powerful, and like you said, Lisa, it's just beginning, this is just the start. And I can't wait to see where it keeps going, and how far this can spread, because man, oh man, you guys are setting a good example for the rest of the country. And I'm really thankful for all of you, and I'm thankful that you invite us every year, because it means a lot to more than just families and things, but it means the world to our most amazing students, clients, spellers. And, yeah, I'm just, I'm a little, I'm always taken aback by it, by the power behind it. So, if I'm a little speechless, usually I can just talk all the time. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right. I want to say something, and I hate public speaking more than anything, so it's got to be important.
But we're not scary.
As my neighbor Lisa Merkel, and my BFF Jen Baker, so I've been here for almost five years, and I'm the person Megan talks about who loves Herndon more than anything, but I joined GKTC three months ago, and my love for Herndon has grown exponentially, because my community got bigger with these guys. I can't say how happy I am to have you all here, and to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Boisco, would you want to come forward for the presentation, and then we'll, and Delegate Samira, we're glad you're here?
So I thank you so much, I'm Senator Jennifer Boisco, I represent the 33rd Senate District.
Did I say delegate?
I don't know.
Okay, sorry.
I just felt like I needed to introduce myself, because not everybody in the room knows me.
Well, last week, I called Jen Baker the Vice Mayor, because old habits die hard, so, sorry. Senator Boisco, Delegate Samira.
I'm joined with Delegate Samir. You want to introduce yourself, and then I'll read this?
Sure. Okay. I'm your newest delegate, Delegate Ibrahim Samira. Nice to meet you all.
Welcome.
Official roles here, I know you all, of course, in unofficial capacities, wonderful day here to recognize the contribution of autistic individuals to our society, and to cherish them fully. What a heartwarming event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I wanted just to give a few remarks before I do the proclamation, because some really important things have happened in the General Assembly, and I think they're worthy of celebration. I appreciate this opportunity to be present for the recognition of National Autism Acceptance Month, and to present the commendation to the Growing Kids Therapy Center. I've met many individuals with autism, their families and the professionals who work with them, including staff, students, and employees who work at frying pan park in Herndon, the service source, the Ark of Herndon, the Ark of Northern Virginia, the Ark of Loudoun, and the Growing Kids Therapy Center. This past session, after several years of work, the General Assembly has finally passed legislation to ensure that all individuals living with autism, no matter what their age, have access to adequate health insurance. Big deal, it's a really big deal. Current law, just so those of you who do not know, current law only requires that coverage be provided to individuals between the ages of two and 10, and then you're left with nothing. And this legislation also removes the age cap for autism coverage, and expands the access to care for nearly 10,000 Virginians living with autism, including transition-age youth and adults. And it will be effective beginning on January 1st, 2020.
That's great.
Yeah. Yes, it's big. Our work in the General Assembly will continue as we work to find quality employment, address transportation needs, and work to ensure that people with autism are treated fairly. Tonight, we are here to present a commendation to the Growing Kids Therapy Center, to recognize their excellent work and commitment to individuals with autism. We're not going to read the entire thing, but just give you the highlights, so that you know how fortunate we believe in the General Assembly we are to have Growing Kids Therapy Center and founder Elizabeth Fossler here in our community. So, we can read this together, if you'd like to do a paragraph, and I'll do a paragraph.
Sure. Commending Growing Kids Therapy Center, whereas Growing Kids Therapy Center in Herndon uses innovative methods to help non-speaking, minimally speaking, and unreliably speaking individuals improve their motor skills and ability to communicate, and...
Whereas Elizabeth Fossler developed a passion for clinical training through field supervision of teachers and speech-language pathologists during their graduate studies, she- establishes the access community through Spelling Professional Development Program to develop a network of trained practitioners prepared to serve all types of clients. And now...
Therefore be it. Resolved by the House of Delegates, the Senate concouring that the General Assembly hereby commend the Growing Kids Therapy Center for its work to help individuals develop motor skills and their ability to communicate. And be it.
Resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Elizabeth Vossler, founder of Growing Kids Therapy Center, as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for its services to the Herndon community. And I'd love you to come take it.
So we're, we're going to join you. I'm going to invite down the entire dais.
This was a surprise.
We're full of surprises here in Herndon. I would like to invite down the entire dais, our delegate and senator. It's not every day you get both delegate and senator to an event, so we're thrilled to have them. And we have representatives from Supervisor Faust's office here, and anyone that would like to come down and join us for the presentation, and all the families, of course.
Sorry, my name is Don Adal. I wasn't elected until a little later.
We had one of your posters in our yard, so we're...
Thank you.
What does she say? It was wonderful. I think I saw it. I'm like...
What is she saying?
It was wonderful.
I'm like...
What is she saying?
I'm like...
We're just so...
What is she saying?
I'm like...
What is she saying?
I'm like...
What is she saying?
I'm like...
What is she saying?
And to keep our eyes moving between our rearview mirror and our, and the front, right? I stood on a corner of Sterling Road and Eldon Street and watched people make left-hand turns. And every single one of them was talking on the cellphone. If they weren't holding it up to their ear, they were holding it in front of them and trying to look at the same time. And I'm as guilty of these sorts of things as anyone, and I, I really wish you all had passed that law because there's something about having a law out there that says you can't do this, that makes it even easier to, to do. But when you see a minister's wife backing out of a driveway while she's talking on the cellphone and people are coming in behind her, you know that our society has just lost its way as far as keeping your hands on the wheel and looking out the window and in the rearview mirror the whole time. So I'd like us to get back to that. I know that's a pipe dream, but I'm gonna say it anyway.
Thank you. And Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Always have to remember, um, young man that used to come visit us, he was a very good friend of my son Matt's named Kyle. And when he was 19, they all came home for college after their first year. Kyle, I remember him teaching me how to flip my omelets because prior to Kyle, I would have to use a spatula to do it. Well, Kyle was doing the right thing when his car stopped and tried to push it off the side of the road, had his blinkers on, and a driver who was texting slammed right into him while he was pushing that car. And thank goodness, we have some folks down in Richmond, and these folks are helping now. The individual that was an attorney, Scott Sorville, that represented the family, there was nothing that could be done. They had just killed their son, and I know, every year. And I'm sure every year, that 30-something-year-old, eight years later, he's 40s, he's gotta remember that he killed that 19-year-old boy and gave a lot of grief to the families. Unfortunately, text if you want to meet Jesus might sound funny, but unfortunately, it meant the person in front of him. The driver was okay, he was in a car, but he hit someone out of the car. But, um, please don't text and drive. And it is illegal to do that in, in Virginia, but we've got a little ways to go, and y'all keep making headway slowly but surely. So eight years later, we're hoping nine years, you're gonna make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would like to invite down Sergeant Bobby Galpin and Corporal Chad Finley are, are here, and they've got some remarks for us, and then we'll come down for the presentation. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Town Council. My name's Chad Finley. I'm assigned to the Herndon Police Department's Traffic Section, and I just want to share a few words with you guys. Distracted driving is a growing concern in our nation, which can lead to serious injury and even death, as we've already mentioned. In 2017 alone, sadly over 3,100 people in the United States died as a direct result of distracted driving. With readily available technology at our fingertips, including vehicle internet access, navigation systems, and cellphone use, distracted driving affects us all. The unfortunate truth is you do not have to be a distracted driver to be dangerous, you just have to be around one. This is why education and deterrence are so important with this growing issue. As always, the Herndon Police Department will be monitoring our roadways to identify distracted driving violations and to educate our citizens on safe driving behavior. I encourage everyone to report distracted driving violations and share with others the tragic consequences that may occur if a driver becomes distracted behind the wheel of a vehicle. And the Herndon Police Department has always, or the Herndon Police Department has and will continue to share safety tips on our social media platforms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, well, I would like to invite down all of our police officers who are here, the, the mayor and town council, everyone from the dais, our delegate and senator, we'd love for you to join us for the presentation. Day. This evening, we are proud to announce that Herndon is the first government entity, including local, state, and federal, to proclaim Nepalese American Heritage Day in the United States. I am pleased to call on Councilmember DeKalb to read the proclamation, who you may or may not know, is one of only four Nepalese Americans in elected office in the entire United States of America. So it is my pleasure to hear this proclamation from you, Mr. DeKalb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A Town of Herndon Proclamation Recognizing Nepalese American Heritage Day, April 20th, 2019. The United States recognized Nepal in 1947, and the two countries established diplomatic relationships in 1948. The migration of Nepalese Americans to the United States began in the 20th century. Nepalese American Heritage Day is recognized on the third Saturday of April each year for celebration within the first week of Nepalese New Year, which is on April 14th, 2019. April 20th marks this year's Nepalese American Heritage Day. The Town of Herndon takes great pride to be the home of many Nepalese Americans, which includes my family and me, and I'm proud to be one of four Americans of Nepalese origin that have been elected to public office in the United States. Therefore, the mayor and the town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby proclaim the 20th day of April 2019 as Nepalese American Heritage Day in the Town of Herndon. Recognize the contributions of Americans of Nepalese origin who through their hard work and engagement, dedication to family, and a strong sense of community have helped to unite and sustain our nation and break down barriers of discrimination, indifference, intolerance, working towards the inclusion of people from all backgrounds. Further, the mayor and town council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby celebrate the history, traditions, and culture of Americans of Nepalese origin, applaud their commitment to leadership, dedication to knowledge, and determination to succeed, and highlight their contribution across all aspects of our society, including, including the arts, space, I mean, science, industry, government, and commerce. Further, the mayor and town council of Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all residents to learn more about the history and culture of Nepal and to celebrate the contributions that make the small town they call Home Herndon a better place to live and work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Mr. DeKalb?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Being an American of Nepalese origin, it's a very proud moment for me, and I'm sure the people sitting here in, inside this room today are even prouder than I am. Yeah, you can wave your hands. And, uh, and I was looking at the statistics, and I found an unofficial data that people of Nepalese origin in U.S. are 315,980, and that's an unofficial data. And out of which there are 80,000-plus people who speak Nepalese, who come from Bhutan, but their heritage is Nepal. They speak Nepalese and share the same culture. So there are many people in this country who have the Nepalese heritage, and it's an honor and pride. And what I can tell you is, everybody, I am myself a first-generation immigrant. So whenever first-generation immigrants, I'm sure many of you may concur with me that when we come to this land of opportunity, first thing we always look for is identity. Everybody has their identity, and they are proud. So when that identity is recognized, then people start contributing. And I think the Nepalese American community has already started community, I mean, contributing to this great nation through many different, you know, ways of life, their profession and everything, but through recognition, they get more empowered, and what they do is they contribute more to the society. So I'm sure not just the Nepalese, but in Herndon, there are many other communities, you know, inside the bigger community, Herndon, they need to be recognized, and that way we can bring them to the front for, forefront, and then they can actually contribute to, to this town we call Home Herndon. So it's a great beginning. We appreciate Town Council and the town residents for this great honor to the Nepalese American. And, you know, I'm sure this happens every year, not just this year, and then I'm sure the Nepalese American really take pride to this one and really become an American of Nepalese origin and contribute to this society from every aspect that we all can. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from council? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, congratulations to the Nepalese community. You have a very fine representative, and, and my friend, Mr. DeKalb, I've gotten to know him. And I said it before, this town is about inclusion, and it wasn't always that way, but this council, we're gonna disagree on a lot of things. Stand by for the budget discussion later, if you want an example. But it's spirit, the inclusion, those are values that we really hold dear. And, and again, I just want to congratulate you on your accomplishment. One of four is pretty special in a large country like this. So congratulations to the community. Thank you.
Concur. Other comments from council? Ms. Friedrichs?
So I come from rural Massachusetts, the mountains, Berkshire's ski area. The first person I ever ran into from Nepal was in college. Her name was Shekha Lamachane, and she was exciting and fun and smart. She has a degree in divinity from Harvard now. And the next time I ran into someone from Nepal was when I moved to Herndon. When I began working with students from Herndon High School with my local Rotary Club, I ran into what turned out to be a very large group of Nepali students. They were more represented, I think, than makes sense in a group of, of students, and part of the reason was that they were so focused on helping others. So I'm gonna mention some names, Surabi, Mahar, and Smirti. These are three of the girls that, that I worked with in the Herndon Interact Club at Herndon High School. And Smirti wanted to raise money, there's her mom, wanted to raise money to help rebuild a school that had been damaged by an earthquake. Mahar wanted to do everything, she's amazing. And Surabi and Mahar together started working on an anti-sex trafficking nonprofit called MedLove, which I found out about when they were given an award by Best of Reston. Surabi wasn't an Interact Club student, but Mahar, her best friend, was. And the next time I met them, they were getting this man elected. So I have to say that I am very impressed. Those girls went down to Southern Virginia with Alliance Club to help provide free medical care to people who couldn't afford it. They have obviously taken the idea of contributing to the community extremely seriously. And I want to thank everybody here, the moms and dads, who I know are bank tellers and poets and, and doctors and lawyers and everything you could be, and I appreciate so much what you've done for us, for our community. And I thank you, and I hope you'll keep it up, and I know you will.
Thank you. We do love it when they have to come all the way to Herndon to find the Best of Reston.
That's right.
It's one of our favorites. Most of the time. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The council member was right. We all look for people that we identify with. I know when I'm around Herndon and I see Roll Tide or War Eagle, I know I can go talk Alabama to them. So I'm very happy that we did this tonight, and thank you for reading it, and you are a great representation of a true leader Nepalean.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Yes. So I want to say thank you for, to the Nepalese community for welcoming me. So one of my experiences as the vice mayor last year was getting the opportunity to, I was invited to, for the Herndon Festival, the ambassador of, from Nepal to the United States was there, and then I was also invited, and I was on the stage, so that was sort of amazing because, like, he's the ambassador, so I don't know why I was there, but they invited me, and it was lovely. And Mr. Councilmember McKenna was there as well, and it was really an incredible experience. And then we paraded through the Herndon Festival, and there is such a camaraderie and a wealth of spirit from the Nepalese Americans that I've met. It was absolutely lovely and such a positive experience. And then, of course, working with Pradeep as he ran for office and meeting him and going to the Fairfax County Nepalese picnic, and again, just the welcome spirit, I want to say thank you for that. So happy to have Pradeep as my colleague and friend on council. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll round it out with Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, it's great that you're here tonight, and as you may know, Ankit Pudel is a member of the Herndon Youth Advisory Council, he's also very active with the Leo Group. The Leos are a high school derivation of the Lions Club, and I do know, I was at the 50th anniversary of the Reston Lions Club last year when they had the Leos. And one thing that was very impressive when Delegate Ken Plum spoke was the, um, the Nepalese children that went down for, it was Doctors Without Borders when they went down to Southern Virginia. And not only the help that they gave, but the comfort and the loving and the caring, it melted a lot of, the borders were completely gone, they were all friends by the end of it. And those kinds of actions make it one country and one world, so truly appreciate everything that you do, and thank you for being here, and thank you for the proclamation.
Yeah, certainly. Well, I concur with my colleagues, I'll be brief. I'll just never forget in the homecoming parade when Pradeep comes marching down Eldon Street with about 400 of his closest friends, I thought, that's, that's barely an exaggeration, it was a couple hundred. We thought, wow, this is a community that wants to be engaged, and we are so thrilled you're here. So thank you for reading the proclamation, we're pleased to have you on council and to be a part of your community as well. So I believe you have someone who's gonna come down and speak, I believe it's Ms. Artis Sigdel?
Yes.
Come on down, and then we'll do the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. So, Madam Mayor, and members of Herndon Council, all the ladies and gentlemen here, today, myself, Artis Sigdel, stand here to thank the Town of Herndon representing the Nepalese community. It is our pleasure that Town of Herndon has proclaimed Nepalese American Heritage Day, which will be celebrated on third Saturday of April every year, and thank you so much. The Nepalese community has been dated as resident here in Herndon from past 30-plus years. This community carries a rich culture inherited from foothills of Himalayas. This community also carries the culture of peace and harmony as preached by Buddha. Nepal is a small but naturally beautiful country in Asia. The Nepalese community here in Herndon has infused themselves with the liberty and prosperity of this great land. We have enjoyed the beauty of trails, parks, Fourth of July fireworks, farmer's market, and Friday nightlife, we can't forget that, right? And Herndon Festival and Community Center. And our children are enjoying in the schools, library, and the American culture here. Recently, Pradeep DeKalb has elected as a council member who helps from this community, everybody knows that now, and we are very proud to share that moment. And then this is really a great melting point of diversity. America has been great land for inviting people around the world, with so many people comes, come here to fulfill their dreams, and we came here to do the same. We take Herndon as our new home and want to demonstrate being good citizen. Herndon is an old town, rich in history, and it is a matter of pride for us to be a part of this town. And today, I'm so happy that also I found out about Elizabeth, who is not here right now, and then as a role model, and then she's also a part of this town, and that makes her more special. From behalf of Moral Nepali Society, which is a very active Nepali community over here, we have a nonprofit organization, an NRNA Virginia chapter, I want, also want to invite you, the mayor, the town council, the town manager, the town attorney, department heads, and all the resident of Town of Herndon, to Herndon Middle School on 20th of April, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, will be celebrating the first-ever Nepalese American Heritage Day and Nepalese New Year 2076. It's open to public. Thank you again for recognizing our roots, and here we open our paddles to be a part of a great, beautiful town like Herndon. And also in that, I also want to add Mr. Persiram Bandari. He wants to offer us few token of love, and Mr. Bandari is also a social worker in our community here, and he has some token of love for you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I made sure these token of loves are worth monetarily less than $10, so it should be okay.
Thank you for looking out for us. Thank you. So, um, so while, I'm gonna go ahead and invite everyone down for the presentation, it might be, if you want to leave, put those on the dais, we'll get them when we come back, or hand them to us when we come down, whatever you want to do would be fine.
You can just take it out.
Beautiful.
Wow.
Thank you, sir. Oh. Oh, beautiful. My brother's a Buddhist, so I'm gonna ask him about this. He's a Tibetan Buddhist. I mean, he's not from Tibet.
Oh, look at that.
That's Nepalese weapons.
They follow the Dalai Lama.
I'm gonna read you to this one.
All right. Oh, I'm not worried. Okay.
How did you know?
These are great.
Thank you, Mr. Bandari.
Thank you so much. So I will invite down the entire dais, bring your, bring your plaque with you for the photo. And I'll invite everyone who's here from the Nepalese community that would like to join us, along with our senator and delegate, anyone that would like to come forward for the recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see, say sorry.
I like it.
I like it.
Could you read what mine says? Do you have to read it?
I like it.
Better to die than to live a coward.
I love it.
Don't give it to me, I'll get worse.
Did we do all the proclamations now?
Yes, we did. All right, we're gonna move right into the comments portion of the agenda. I understand the town manager has some great news for us this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. A few weeks ago, the council asked me to, at every public hearing, give an update on the downtown, even if it was, there's nothing to report. Tonight is not one of those nights. After months and months and months of a comprehensive engineering review and zoning review, I can report to you that the site plan has been approved, and we are now moving on to the Heritage Preservation Review Board, where Comstock has submitted their application for three certificates of appropriateness to appear before the Heritage Preservation Review Board. Staff is looking at those applications for completeness, it could possibly be before the HPRB as early as May. So that is where we are right now with the downtown redevelopment, that is, again, a major milestone. This was months and months of due diligence on these, on these very detailed plans. I applaud the engineering staff and the zoning staff in the town for their hard work and dedication to making sure that this met every standard that they, it needed to meet for it to be approved, and I'm very, very pleased to report to you that it has been, and we are on to the next step. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I signed the plaits yesterday, I got a phone call, I'm driving out of the carpool line, "How soon can you be here?" If you don't mind me in sweats and a bun on top of my head, I can be there in two minutes, and so that's how I came and signed the plat, so we got it done. Thank you very much. This is time for comments from council, I'll start with Mr. McKenna.
Just to dovetail on what the town manager said, the Dulles Phase II rail project is moving along, especially the Herndon parking garage will be opening this week, so the brand-new one will be opening up, very excited about that. Everything seems to be working, it's, right now, rails look to be at their 98% capacity, but as you know, with engineering and testing, some of those things can be a little daunting, but right now, everything is moving forward as planned, it's pretty exciting. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs?
I was sorry not to be able to attend the volunteer appreciation night this Sunday, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to thank anybody who, who may be watching, and we really appreciate our volunteers, as I think I expressed at my last public statement. This is also budget season, and I encourage our residents to let us know what they would like to see in this year's budget. We've received some comments asking about cost of recycling, proposing a new arts granting procedure, which we'll need to probably wait for the next budget cycle. We've received questions about sidewalk safety, letters from HCTV and other nonprofits about their needs, input about police, comments about taxes, and more. So please continue to let us know your concerns while we discuss and consider all the ramifications of our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Delagula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll dovetail on that. It is budget season, I've had some very interesting and enlightening conversations with a lot of people, so really appreciate those, keep those ideas coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Thank you, Mr. DeKalb.
Just wanted to mention the HPD award that we attended, thank you, Herndon Police Department. Those stories were very powerful, and that proves why Herndon Police Department is exemplary, so thank you for doing that. And I was part of mayor's volunteer appreciation, thank you. Thank you all the volunteers, you know, who worked tireless to, tirelessly to make this town a better and beautiful town. So if you see, you know, 300-plus volunteers and putting their hours, their energy and money and everything, and if you multiply that by 2469, which is, I think, the national average for volunteer, you know, rate, Herndon is lucky to have millions of dollars of revenues through volunteers, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues, and I want to thank all the volunteers that help bring all of the events and help the people in need in our community, that we would not be able to serve without the, the help of our volunteers. And we have a long agenda, so I'm gonna leave it to that. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Mayor, good grief. Sorry.
You sit to the, you sit to the left, and you just get left out.
Oh, har har, I'm sorry.
So, spring cleanup is underway. If you don't have your stuff out and your trash is picked up on Thursday or Friday, you still have time, so I'm frantically cleaning out my garage. We have the farmer's market opening next week, so those of you that enjoy that, get ready, it's, it's back open, and I'll be down there talking to the tree people about my trees, because I think I've gotten one of those horrible bugs. And also, I concur with everyone on the volunteer appreciation evening, if it weren't for all the volunteers we have in average for volunteer, you know, rate, Herndon is lucky to have millions of dollars of revenues through volunteers. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues and I want to thank all the volunteers that help bring all of the events and help the people in need in our community, that we would not be able to serve without the help of our volunteers. And we have a long agenda, so I'm going to leave it to that. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Mayor, good grief. Sorry.
You sit to the left and you just get left out.
Sorry. Oh, har har. I'm sorry.
So, spring cleanup is underway. If you don't have your stuff out and your trash is picked up on Thursday or Friday, you still have time. So I'm frantically cleaning out my garage. We have the farmer's market opening next week, so those of you that enjoy that, get ready, it's back open. And I'll be down there talking to the tree people about my trees, because I think I've gotten one of those horrible bugs. And also, I concur with everyone on the volunteer appreciation evening. If it weren't for all the volunteers we have in Herndon and all the things that go on, this wouldn't be Herndon. It is what makes Herndon, Herndon. So thank everyone that volunteers, whether it's a couple of hours or 200 hours a year. It's awesome to have such a giving community.
Thank you. And again, my apologies, I didn't mean to skip right over you. I'm looking at this agenda going, oh my gosh, we're going to be here till tomorrow. So this is the time for comments from the audience. This is a time to come forward, to speak on an item that is not listed as a public hearing. So if you're here to talk about the metro plan, or the budget, or any of the public hearings, this is not the time to come forward. If you'd like to speak on any other item or our general or consent agenda, now is the time. You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not a public hearing? Anyone? Okay. No? Okay, seeing none, I will move to our first public hearing. Okay, the first public hearing is continued from our March 26 meeting. Its ordinance 19007 to consider development plan number 1701, an application for a Herndon transit-oriented core development plan to allow a mixed-use development located at 555 Herndon Parkway. The owner is 555 Herndon LLC. The representatives are here from Penzance Management LLC. I will open the public hearing, and I will announce, we have received some comments for the council, they've been entered into the record, and I will recognize Bryce Perry, our deputy director of community development, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the town council, as you mentioned, this has been continued from the March 26 public hearing. This presentation is a bit of a bridged version from the presentation you all received at that hearing. Oops, actually, before I go to that. So Development Plan 17-01 proposes to entitle the property located at 555 Herndon Parkway to redevelop with up to three mixed-use buildings, built up to three possible phases, up to a 4.3 floor area ratio, that would be the density. The subject property located at 555 Herndon Parkway is about 300 feet from where the Herndon Metro Station touchdown will be within the town of Herndon. It abuts the southern boundary line for the town between Dulles Toll Road and Herndon Parkway. The 4.3 acre site is currently improved with a approximately 90,000 square foot office building, some surface parking, and some landscape buffers. This is one of nine properties that is owned PD TOC, that's Plan Development Transit-Oriented Core, and one of the nine properties that are within the Herndon Transit-Oriented Core, which was an area that was master-planned in 2012 to allow for the greater densities and the mix of uses and the highly-designed urban environment that's being proposed with this project. The properties across Herndon Parkway that are north are zoned office and light industrial and the closest residential to the property, existing residential to the property. It's about a quarter of a mile away. Those are the single-family detached homes in the Downs neighborhood to the north and the condos and the metro square development at the extreme northern edge of the H-Toc area. The project is comprised of a mid-rise residential building, a high-rise residential building, and an high-rise office building. Each of these buildings would sit on a parking garage and would have retail spaces, amenity spaces, and lobby spaces wrapped along the ground floors for a portion of that garage. This view here is from Herndon Parkway. The mid-rise residential building obviously is in the foreground, as is the residential tower. The mid-rise building shown here is about six levels of residential above the garage, and the residential tower is about 19 floors above the garage. This view here is taken from the south elevation from the Toll Road. Again, you have that mid-rise building that's on the left side, and then the high-rise tower that's on the right side, and that's about 14 floors tall. The conceptual design of the project really focuses on an engaging and visually interesting open space, the largest of which is a center plaza area. That's what is shown here. That space includes a lawn area, a shaded decking area, really a myriad of different surface treatments and site furnishings, and allows for opportunities for recreation, for respite, for socializing, for programmed activities. And that diverse and quality open space design is then wrapped around to the streetscapes that are along the private side streets. The view here, which is shown from Herndon Parkway, shows the streetscape along Herndon Parkway, which includes a two-way cycle track, a nice wide urban sidewalk, a street tree verge, a planting strip, and some cafe seating for the uses. And then, also along the side streets, again, nice wide sidewalks for the urban environment and landscaping strips. This also shows the design and the location of the retail spaces of the site that will be mostly on the northern half of the project, closer to Herndon Parkway along that ground Almost all the parking will be provided for within the structured parking garage, with the exception of a few on-street parking spaces. Parking will be provided to, at a minimum, meet what is required by code, although the applicant has indicated a desire to possibly provide a little bit more parking in some cases. The garage is both above and below grade, it's about 3.5 levels above and 4.5 below. And I mentioned phases earlier, the project is designed to allow for three phases of construction. That would include three different phases of construction for the garage as well. However, the way it is designed would allow for, at full build-out, for the garage to function as a single garage. This isn't shown here, but there is also bicycle parking that will be provided for in this project. There's required, essentially private required bicycle parking for the residences and for the office space and for the retail. In addition to that, there will be public bicycle racks that are provided for within the streetscapes and the other open space areas, including that center plaza area. So access to and through the site is probably best explained when looking at the plan view for the project. But actually, before I get into that real quick, this also, this slide here, which shows the project in plan view, also gives you a good idea of where the building footprints will be for each phase. Building A in yellow, building B in blue, and building C in the reddish color. And then to point out here, the green areas, the green areas are the private open space, private amenity space that is going to be on top of the podium, the podium, so that will be on top of the garage and be provided for by the people that live there, the people that work there. And then everything else that's on here, that's black and white, those are all the ground-level open space areas. That's your streets and your sidewalks and the plaza area. So back to speaking about access. For pedestrian access, there are sidewalks along each of the streets that are separated from the roads by landscaping strips to include street trees. There's also the plaza area, and there's also crossings, decorative crossings, both at intersections and mid-block. And lastly, there's pedestrian passages that cut mid-block through the project, both along the west side and the east side and the south side. These pedestrian passages will be enclosed, they're, for the most part, through the garages. However, they are dedicated spaces just for pedestrians. This is now showing the bicycle facilities to provide bicycle access through the sites. There is, as I mentioned earlier, a two-way cycle track along Herndon Parkway. That is a facility that will eventually run all the way from Van Buren Street to the west to the WNOD Trail, just north of Spring Street to the east. There's also on-street bicycle markings along each of the Loop Road segments. The Loop Road is the private street that runs along the perimeter of the project. That's what is highlighted here in purple. And then, of course, the vehicle access. Vehicle access is gained at three points off of Herndon Parkway. These are the blue arrows shown here on this slide. The western entrance is the only full entrance, which means it allows for both right-in, right-out for vehicles and left-in, left-out. That will be, at full build-out, that will be controlled with a traffic signal, and that will be necessary to continue, for the intersection to continue operating at an acceptable level. The middle, mid-block entrance, it will be right-in, right-out only for vehicles, as will the entrance on the east side of the project. There is a raised median in Herndon Parkway that will obviously limit cars from taking a left-hand turn in or out. There are entrances into the garage on each of the roads, private roads. They're all roughly about mid-block, and those are indicated by the yellow arrows on this slide. The development plan proposes approximately 475,000 square feet of residential, 325,000 square feet of office, and 13,000 square feet of retail. That equates to around 40% office, 58% residential, and 2% retail. But the plan does also allow for some flexibility in the square footages of each of the uses. So there's two other examples, two other scenarios that are shown here that could be allowed for the development plan. One is an option in which the three buildings are built at a minimum square footage. Those are your two columns on the right-hand side of this table. In that scenario, there's only 200 square feet of office, there's only 175,000 square feet of residential, and only 8,000 of retail. And the other scenario that's shown is what would occur if the office building went up to the maximum height that's permitted by the code, that's 275 feet. That would essentially equate to an almost 400,000 square foot office tenant. If that scenario occurred, the residential buildings would have to be reduced in overall square footage to still stay within the 4.3 floor area ratio. And in that case, the office goes up to about 49% of the square footage, residential down to 49%, and the retail still to 2%. As a development plan, the town can accept proffers for this project, which have been offered by the applicant, and they are outlined here. The development plan is proffered. There are proffers for architecture and urban design, proffers for the use mix, which sets a maximum for residential, maximum square footage for residential, and minimum square footage for office. And that's very important for us to be able to ensure that balance of uses as envisioned by the H-Toc master plan. There is proffers for transportation, proffers for both green building and site design practices, and there's monetary contributions in the proffers to Fairfax County, for schools and for fire and rescue, and to the town for parks and recreational facilities, sanitary sewer infrastructure, as it relates specifically to the development of the H-Toc area, and off-site transportation improvements, also as it relates specifically to the development of the H-Toc. The applicant and staff have forked through a number of comments all throughout this review process, and there are none remaining at this point. The application as presented to you all this evening has not changed since you all saw it back in March, and staff is recommending approval of the draft ordinance. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there, this is the time for questions of council, to the staff, are there questions on this presentation or project? Anyone? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I will invite the applicant's agent forward. Ken Wire is here. Glad you're feeling better. And we look forward to hearing from you.
So, Madam Mayor, members of town council, Ken Wire with Wire Gill. With me this evening is Frank Polley and Mike Novotny with Penzance, as well as members of the design team, the civil engineering team, and the traffic team. It's been quite a process to get here, and I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. 10 years ago, you started the idea of working on what a master plan would look like for your H-Toc area. Now we have a metro station underway. You approved a master plan, you set up zoning, and we're very pleased to be the first project to come forward to deliver on the vision that you've laid out for this H-Toc area. We're providing the height, the density, the uses, the open space, the traffic network. It's a great project. We have a 33-page presentation that we'll spare you with. If you have any questions, we're happy to go back over that. But again, we're very excited to be here. We're looking forward to working with the town. One thing I do want to note, where we are in the process, I think, sometimes we come to these meetings and those of us who do it for a living aren't quite sure, those of us who don't do it for a living, what the process is about. So just as a little bit of a reminder, you're approving a development plan, which is a set of tools and proffers to address those impacts that sets a box. We will be coming back to your architectural review board to put the skin on the building. We'll probably spend several months working with staff, working through the site plan process, and we're looking forward to that. But this is just a point on the spectrum, and we're very happy to move forward, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Wire from the council? Anyone?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. So this is, did staff have anything to add after that? Okay. So this is a public hearing, this is your opportunity to come forward and speak on this item. You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. I'm anticipating possibly a lot of comments, so I'm going to try to stick very closely to the three-minute mark. So is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Maybe you're all here for the budget. Okay, go in once. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 19-0-07.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by the vice mayor, seconded by Mr. Delagula. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, this has been a long time coming. I moved here in '90 thinking Metro would be here in 2000, so just a few years late, but I'm looking forward to seeing Metro arrive and the redevelopment of that area. So this is a very exciting project. And as the applicant said, this isn't the end, this is the beginning. They still have a lot of things to do, and the public will still be able to have input at the other meetings with the ARB and so forth, so look forward to hearing those.
Mr. Delagula.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is long overdue, certainly. I think it goes and fits in line with our vision in terms of Herndon being not just a regional draw, but one for the Commonwealth, potentially a national draw. This is the hidden gem, and I'm looking forward to more people experiencing Herndon. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Mr. McKenna, followed by Ms. Friedrichs.
I just want to thank staff and also the developer for the follow-up last work session. You did a very good job being succinct in regards to some of the questions that were raised the last public session, so kudos to Bryce and company and also the developer. Really appreciate you following up. It was a very good job, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs.
We've asked a lot of questions of this developer, and they have been great at coming through. I know they've had a number of meetings with members of the community over there, they've had meetings with us. We've heard this a lot. I haven't seen any comments, and maybe I've missed them, from anyone in the general population, so I think, I think this is a great project. It's beautiful, it looks like it's going to add a great value to that part of Herndon. And as we said when we were talking about the development of Herndon, the downtown stays a little incute, the area around the metro is our tech corridor. So I love this, and I hope my colleagues do too.
Other comments? Ms. Baker?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just say thank you again. I know we continued this at the last hearing, seeking more public comment, as Ms. Friedrichs just said, and I do think, you know, with two and a half years and opportunity for lots of input and lots of work with our staff, just thank you again for the efforts and the diligence on putting something forward that I think is really, really solid, and it's a great start, and we're looking forward to seeing it come to life.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I am excited about it. I can't believe we didn't have any comments tonight, but I think that's a good sign that this has really been well-vetted so far, and we're really just at the beginning. I am really impressed with the progress the project has made over the past couple of years. This is a very different project than when it started, and I would just like to thank you for taking the time to look into such quality materials and a nod to Herndon's history and really making this stand out. It's not easy to be first. This is the first real transit-oriented development that has come to our 38 acres. So thank you for being bold and being first. And with that, I will call the question on the motion which was made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. Delagula, to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. And Sheila? Eight years later, we finally have our first plan. High five. All right, thank you very much. Woo, it's a long road. Thank you so much for being here. So now it's budget season, we're going to get started. The next five items relate to the town manager's proposed 2020 budget. The process this evening will be to call for disclosures by council, recognize the town manager for his presentation, followed by questions from the council. Then we will call separate public hearings on the tax levy, the meals tax, and the use charges for
and the diligence on putting something forward that I think is really, really solid, and it's a great start, and we're looking forward to seeing it come to life.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I am excited about it. I can't believe we didn't have any comments tonight, but I think that's a good sign that this has really been well-vetted so far, and we're really just at the beginning. I am really impressed with the progress the project has made over the past couple of years. This is a very different project than when it started, and the, I, I would just like to thank you for taking the time to look into such quality materials and a nod to Herndon's history and really making this stand out. It's not easy to be first. This is the first real transit-oriented development that has come to our 38 acres. So thank you for being bold and being first. And with that, I will call the question on the motion which was made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. Delagula, to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion carries. And Sheila, eight years later, we finally have our first plan. High five. All right, thank you very much. Woo, it's a long road. Thank you so much for being here. So now it's budget season, we're going to get started. The next five items relate to the town manager's proposed 2020 budget. The process this evening will be to call for disclosures by council, recognize the town manager for his presentation, followed by questions from the council. Then we will call separate public hearings on the tax levy, the meals tax, and the use charges for water and sewer, followed by concurrent public hearings on the fiscal planning resolution and appropriation ordinance. At the conclusion of each public hearing, I will ask for separate motions to continue the public hearings until April 23rd, because we want to have at least two opportunities for the public to come forward. We have already advertised the second public hearing for April 23rd. The record will remain open. Individuals may continue to email, call us, get their comments to us in any way that you would like. At the end of the public hearing on April 23rd, council will act on each of these items, and we'll take a roll call vote, but that will be next week, or in two weeks, should we pass the budget in two weeks. So with that, I will begin, I'll call for disclosures by council, and I will start, and this will be a good time to take a break, audience, because we're all going to say very similar things, but we do have to read our disclosures into the record individually. So I will start. For the record, throughout the year, I may be invited as a guest to attend events hosted by various organizations, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits to the town. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and the town attorney, and I believe we each have disclosures, so I'll just start with Mr. McKenna and go all the way down. Mr. McKenna.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which have, may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I'm able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and the town attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedrichs.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I'm able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with town clerk and town attorney.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosures with the town clerk and town attorney. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I'm able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, for the record, throughout the year, I may be invited as a guest to attend events hosted by various organizations, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. I'm able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. So I will turn it over to our town manager, Bill Ashton, for the presentation on the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get started, I just want to say, I, I have an observation. The management team of the town of Herndon is one of the coolest group of people, like when they get, they don't show their stress very well. When I got up to start walking towards the door to come here, they looked at me and said, "You're not leaving, are you?" And we had some blood pressure rise, but I looked at them and said, "Yeah, you got this."
Yeah, don't scare them like that.
Oh, no, I'd hate to do that. Before we get into the meat of the budget, each budget year, we start out coming to you all, the town council, and ask, what are your budget priorities? What are your guidance to us as we go about structuring the budget for the upcoming fiscal year? That's one of the first things we do. The departments have started kind of putting together what their needs are at this point, but the, the truly, that is the first major milestone, is when the council gives to the staff their budget priorities and guidance. This occurred during the last public hearing of January, and just to remind you of what these priorities were. You asked me to develop a budget that would fund activities to advance the 2035 vision. Specifically, you were concerned about the sustainability plan, you were concerned about downtown redevelopment, you were concerned about an arts facility in that downtown redevelopment. You wanted us to continue our focus on technology in order to provide better and more efficient services to our citizens. You also asked me to demonstrate a commitment, an investment in the town employees. Specifically, you talked to the employee skills development, succession planning for, for our, for some of our senior employees that are looking at retirement. You were, you were very interested in leadership development for some of our newer leaders that have taken over since others have retired. And you also were very interested, and you recognized that the Northern Virginia economic market is highly competitive, it is at near zero unemployment, and that you wanted me to make sure that we positioned ourselves to get the best possible employees we can have in this local market. You also wanted us to continue our work that we started three years ago towards updating our budgetary policies. You wanted me to prepare a budget that addresses the rising cost associated with service program delivery. You wanted me to, to look at additional revenues if appropriate. You asked me to remove the policy of linking meals tax from downtown development and various economics initiatives. You also wanted me to revisit the town, or the town of Herndon's parks and recreation cost recovery model. Herefore, it was 70%, you wanted us to take a look at that. Is that truly the way we want to move forward? You wanted us to have a forward-looking towards metro rail, you wanted us to look at the downtown redevelopment projects. You also asked me to make a comprehensive assessments of the town's exposure along with our revenue streams. As we talked in the previous two years, the recurring revenue streams and the recurring expenditure streams were starting, those two lines, they started to get very, very close, uncomfortably close, which doesn't give us a whole lot of latitude if we have any surprises or things pop up. So you wanted me to take a look at that, especially in light of, what are we doing to, to make sure that our assets are refreshed on a lifecycle basis? Our vehicles, our, our buildings, to make sure that we are investing in the things that we've already made an investment in, to make sure these, these assets are with us for a long period of time, or replace when appropriate. Once you passed that and gave that to me and to my budget team and to staff, we started developing the budget. And then about halfway through developing the budget, we, we were hit with some very, some very interesting news. We had see, we were seeing a $1-point-million-dead decline in B-pole revenues, that we had had kind of a fluctuation and a shift in B-pole that was pretty seismic. Initially, this isn't a big concern for the operating budget, because we only were counting on about 400,000 of that into the operating budget, but it was a $1.1 million hit to our capital budget and our cap, future capital reserves. Interestingly enough, at the same time, we had had, received some bad news about shortfalls on one of our critical transportation projects in town, which we'll talk about here in a minute. And since then, this last Friday, I got another notice of another critical transportation project that also has a shortfall, and we'll, and we will talk to why that's important. You wanted, other critical drivers, we were trying to address some macro-level budgeting issues that kind of fit in a little bit with your budget guidance, how we were doing our vehicle and equipment rotations. We were doing some of it in our capital improvement program, we were doing some of it in the operating budget, and there was no rhyme or reason to why was, what was where, and we, we needed to kind of get that normalized. We also had very similar things in our building maintenance, our major road repaving, and in our technology upgrades and equipment replacement. We had to try to get all those, and, and one of the challenges we were trying to get is to get those into the operating budget, because those are truly operating expenditures. So with that, here's the overview. What we project next year in taxes by each major category, and we're going to go into some of these in more in-depth, as you see, our two biggest categories are other local taxes, I'll talk to that specifically here in a minute, and property taxes. You're seeing growth in a lot of the areas, but what you see is the intergovernmental assistance coming from other governments for grant funding for various activities is declining. You're seeing some, a couple other revenue areas declining, but what we're showing here in the other local taxes, what is keeping that from a major decline is that we have proposed, and I'll put right up front, and we'll talk to it more here in a second, a 1% increase to the meals tax to offset the money we're losing in, on the B-pole side, so they cancel each other out in essence. The two major, the two major tax categories we receive, first is property tax. What you're seeing right now is residential sets value to include new, to include new construction is an increase of about 4.6%. The residential property is, accounts for about 4.8% of this, commercial property for about 4.3% of it, for an average of 4.6. Our real estate breakdown remains. This is a very advantageous position to be in for any local government, where 56% of our tax base is residential, 44% is commercial. That's why when we talked about the H-Toc a few minutes ago and Pennzance, why it was important to make sure we had the right amount of commercial mixed in with the residential, to make sure that balance is observed. What this allows us to do is it gives us a little bit of a softening element to, as taxes, tax assessments go up, usually one or the other category is kind of pulling it down, so you don't get a sugar rush on the one side, but then when the other collapses, the other one kind of buoys you, so you don't crash either. A lot of the other jurisdictions in Virginia have much more residential than we do. This is a very advantageous, it speaks directly to the fact that Herndon is an employment center, and we bring in many, many people into this town every day to, to work in addition to the folks that live here. As you're looking at the residential valuation by percent change, this kind of gives you the distribution. Most, most folks are in the 0% to 5% increase. You get some outliers at plus 40, you get some outliers that they, they've lost 20% value in their home on the left-hand side, but everything is, is around that 0% to 5%. Pretty, fairly evenly distributed. This is not unusual, we've seen this bouncing between the 0% and the 0% to 5% for the past couple of years. So the current and proposed rate for the budget that I delivered to you, the proposed budget I delivered to you is 26.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. It remains the same. That will increase the levy based on new construction and some valuation changes of about $500,000, just a little under $500,000. And just so you all know, the equalization rate for that is $465,000. So this meant we had to put an ad in the paper, because the, the valuation is up on the levy. So we are not changing the rate of this at all in this proposed budget. The other local tax categories, these are the other areas. Transit occupancy, also known as hotel taxes. Our adopted rate this year and next year, both 6%. B-pole, it's a very interesting and complex tax, there's various rates depending on the business activity that the, that the, that's being engaged in. It's also complex in terms of when you come into town as a new business, you have to estimate your first two years, and then it gets, then it gets kind of reconciled at the end of the first two years, then you have to either pay them back, or they pay more, and then it takes about four years or so for a business to kind of get into a norm where we can expect what we know what to expect, but it's a very convoluted tax. But that's why it says multiple rates there. Those rates are not changing in this proposed budget. Cigarette taxes is a declining tax, because thankfully, I think, fewer, fewer people are smoking. That remains at 75 cents per pack. Vehicle registration fees remain the same, 25 and 35, depending on the weight of the vehicle. Bank stock fees, this is another very convoluted tax that doesn't really net a whole lot of, a whole lot of money to the town, but this is also proposed to have no change. Cable franchise fees, no change. Personal property tax, the town has not had one for as long as I can remember, and we're not proposing a personal property tax now either. Meals tax, it is currently 2.5, and we are, in this budget, I am proposing a 3.5 meals tax. This would bring in an additional $900,000 to help offset what we are losing in the B-pole tax assessments, which go directly to transportation projects. It's important, because the three transportation projects we have coming up between now and FY 2025, all have direct effects on how the metro area will operate. The first one coming up is Van Buren Street, which is, the bid package goes out later this year. John is nodding and said, "Thank you." I have that fact correct. The second one is Spring Street, which, once we complete Van Buren, we're going to pivot to Spring Street. This one is the one where we received a notice from VDOT that the project was $2.4 million. The, the project cost, estimated project cost has gone up $2.4 million when we had a shortfall. This is interesting from the perspective of, we have historically relied on state grants to fund these projects. The state funding grant streams are drying up, they're getting smaller. The money is going, in this case, half of it's going to metro rail, half it's going to roads. You have this really large Seattle-based company coming to Arlington that is, that is sucking a lot of transportation money in that direction, so our opportunities to fill this with grant money is diminished. Now that said, we are still going out with a revenue sharing grant proposal later this year to try to shore up some of that $2.4 million, but we're going to have to put some skin in that game to make that happen. Spring Street is existential to the functioning of metro. There is no, no way around that. Beyond Spring Street, we pivot to East Eldon Street. We have a, what was a $46.1 million project, give or take, to redo East Eldon Street from the downtown out to, to the Fairfax County Parkway. We received word on Friday that that now is about $5 million. We have a $5 million shortfall on that project. Similarly, we're going to scramble, we don't anticipate, even though land acquisition started for the right-of-way, we don't anticipate starting that till about 2023. We are going to go out and try to get in the grant funding cycles for those, to close those shortfalls, but again, I think the time where, those times where we've had in the past where we've put in 70, $80,000 on a $10 million road project, we're going to be in a position to put more skin in the game to make those road projects happen. That's why we took a really long look at how can we replace that B-pole, shift in that B-pole tax base, and try to do something to allow us to have that capital flexibility as we move forward. Hence why I have proposed in this budget a, a 1% increase to the meals tax. So as you're looking at the changes in the, in the entire budget, general fund, water and source, cemetery, golf course, downtown park, and capital projects, we're going to get to each one here in a second, but this is what we're looking at. We're looking at a $53 million, $53,651,000 total town budget for next fiscal year, is what I propose. You immediately see, wow, it's down almost 11%, six and a half million dollars, woo. Well, that's because primarily driven off the fact that last year, we bought a, a extra water capacity for metro at about $6.25 million. So we're not buying that again this year, so that's why you've seen that shift in this year's budget. So what, what this is, is actually pretty much a flat-based budget to what we've seen in, in the previous years. So let's talk about them. Let's talk about the general fund first. The recommended general fund budget is $37 million. That is a 2.3% increase over last year's general fund recommended, or adopted budget, rather. That is probably just maybe a tenth or maybe two-tenths of a point higher than the inflation rate right now. So this is in essence, a, as you keep up a value of money, a flat budget again. We are recommending funding 237 regular positions in the general fund. You're going to see 266 when you combine all the other funds together, but 237 in the general fund. We had a, we're asking for you all to, to adopt a neighborhood improvement coordinator. This is a Fairfax County grant that we've received. This position operates to look at some of our neighborhoods in need, to see what we can do to provide them the assistance to update and modernize the exteriors of their house, maintain their exteriors a little bit better. That's what this position is intended to do. It is funded out of the county, so it is not coming out of the general fund tax base, per se, but we're asking you to put that, to put that in. Also, this year, for the first time in at least two years, it, well, I, this is my third budget, the previous two budgets, this is the first time I've seen it, we have an increase in healthcare, 7%. That is on average between all of our, between our two options for healthcare for employees. Virginia retirement system, that is a two-year actuarial, so we're under the same numbers as last year. This will be reassessed next year, so you will see a movement in the VRS retirement next year, once they redo the actuaries for the next two-year cycle. I'm proposing in this, going back to making sure we have a competitive workforce, salary adjustments, pay-for-performance, this is the merit-based pay system. I'm asking for a 2% average increase for employees based on if you are not meeting standard, you would get nothing, up to probably about a 3% maybe. That's, HR would look at this once adopted and create the, create the brackets around this program, but this would be a pay-for-performance for, for just... this program, but this would be a pay performance for, for just their performance of their jobs. We're also looking for a 1.3% COLA. Initially I came to you with a 1.25% COLA until we saw the healthcare increase and I proposed adjusting it up to 1.3 to help absorb the employee's contribution to the healthcare increase. So we're not saying here have a COLA owe you, by the way, we need to take some of it back because your healthcare went up as well. So this was something to, for them to really realize the 1.25. I can't stress to the council enough, the importance of that COLA to our lower income employees. You know, I had a, one of our refuse workers once looked at me and said, you know, the pay performance is great, but tell me what an excellent trash collector does. And you kind of get put back on your heels at first. And I said, well, you know what? That's a problem with our pay for performance system and we have strived to address that. And that's like, are you embodying the values? Do you come with the servant's heart? Are, these should be all the excellent things you bring to the table, but we're still not quite there. And so the, the COLA is what they hone in on. When I go to the shop to present the budget after you all adopt and I go to each staff group to talk to them about it, that's the first question they'll ask me. And then, and they seize on that because it is that important to them. We're also looking for a pay adjustment for temporary and part-time flexible employees of about 1%. And then the last bullet on here is a sworn officer adjustment of 1.7%. This is because if you look at the past two budget cycles prior to this one and this one, Fairfax County has given their police about 5% a year. We are losing pace to the county. Now, right now, because I think the chief runs one of the finest law enforcement agencies in the country, we are attracting officers from other jurisdictions, but we have started to lose a couple. And I think it's important, especially after the past couple of years of not addressing this, to address it in this budget and get the, and get the police officers up to what Fairfax County is at a 5% increase for this next fiscal year. Some of the major operations and maintenance things, building, maintenance, repair. Again, we took a lot of things out of the CIP. We normalized them into operational expenses. We put them into the general fund and that you're seeing that as a major driver. Landfill charges, they're going up. We, we had this conversation, we've had several conversations with y'all over the past several weeks about the recycling program, about the, about refuse in general, and those charges are continuing to rise. Repaving program, again, making sure that our streets are repaved on, on schedule and on time. Herndon Festival, $350,000. This does not account for the offset we'll get back in fees from the festival if we have good weather. And Cindy's giving me the thumbs up, up there. It's when we have bad weather that we start to get a little skittish like last year, but hopefully we're back to a good weather cycle. And you'll see here various other areas that are, that are driving this. If you look at the bottom line contract services, I'm going to draw your attention to this. The $98,000, a portion of this, not the whole 98,000, I think that was a point of confusion at last week's work session, a portion of this is going directly to studying the cost recovery models at Parks and Recreation. So one of your pieces of guidance to me to take a look at this, we are taking a look at this. We're also looking for them to also look at other fees that we have coming up. Our building permit fees, we're going to see a lot of construction at metro, are our building permit fees right sized? Things like that, that we're going to be looking at next year to prepare ourselves for metro, to prepare ourselves for downtown, to prepare Parks and Rec to a new cost recovery model. That's what you're seeing in that 98,000 amongst other things in there. We have some general fund equipment that we're going to purchase. Again, this is replacement. This isn't new. This is taking vintage 1999 pickup trucks off the road and give our employees something that doesn't have rusted floorboards. This is what, this is what you're seeing here. This is again, part of our, our vehicle replacement program. It's a start. It's going to start moving us in the right direction. We still have a ways to go on this. Quite frankly, once we got that B pole news and took that $400,000 hit to the general fund, a lot of my plans for things like this were softened a bit and we're going to spread them out over a little more time, but we will get, we will get to the right place with our vehicle rotations. General fund includes the capital improvement program spend expenditures for next fiscal year. Again, 874,000, that's an important number because the 1% increase, the meals tax is projected at 900,000. And we're looking at replacing the tennis bubble, $345,000. This is a very popular, very popular facility that the Parks and Recreation Department runs during the winter time, the indoor tennis center. Actually this bubble will pay itself, probably pay off in about seven and a half years under current revenue models, based on past revenue performance of the bubble. So this has a 15-year lifecycle. The current bubble is, I think, sitting at about 75 years, no, 20, it's about 20 years, but we, they have, they've stretched it as far as they can. We also, Herndon Parkway and Foley, and Spring Street and Foley Look, these two were necessary because these have matching grants attached to them. If we don't spend the money next year, we lose the matching grants. So we accelerate these projects up to make sure they get encumbered into next year's budget so that the matching grants don't evaporate. We don't want to lose other people's money to do some of these projects. So they were moved and those ones made it through the, the process. Enterprise fund, water and sewer, not just a little bit under $10 million in our water and sewer funds, you see a 27% increase. We're not going to sit here and do high fives. We just didn't buy a whole lot of water this year like we did last year. We bought a million gallons of capacity from Fairfax Water for future use. That was a business decision. We had a AAA bond and low interest rates and we could get a loan for 3.7% and Fairfax Water had been jacking up this cost, but at about five and a quarter, five and a half a year. So this, that was just a pure business decision to buy it then. Also, we have a big sewer capacity purchase coming up in a couple of years and we didn't want those two running together. And you don't usually want your water and sewer running together. So that was one of the reasons why the, the driver for the cost to go down. We are proposing in this year's budget, the enterprise fund overview for the water and sewer fund. These proposals for rates are based directly off a rate study that we had performed for the town last year. If you recall, we had not raised a water and sewer rate since about 2012. We were the lowest in the region by significant number. Our actual, we were starting to see the water and sewer fund from a cash flow perspective in the red. It was not covering its costs. We had to take a look at our water and sewer rates and make them more, at least somewhat more competitive too, at least with the region is spending. So the rates we're, we're asking for this year, I'm asking for a 41% or I'm sorry, not 41%, check that, a 41 cent. I'll repeat that, a 41 cent increase in the sewer service rate, up to $6.19. The sewer lateral repair and replacement program is, remains at $2 and the sewer availability fees are all in the same schedule. We had just re, we just upgraded all the sewer availability fees when we adopted, when the council adopted the report last year, we did the sewer availability fees at the same time. Just so you know what availability fees are, these are the things that will, that will fund our capital improvements in the water and sewer fund. We had commentary a couple of weeks ago where somebody talked about the need to raise taxes because of all the water and sewer we're going to have to throw into metro. No, that's, that's, that's not, the sewer, water and sewer fund is a standalone fund. It has cash, it has a, has, has a cash balance. I forget how many, it's like 240 days or something like that of cash on hand to operate the fund by policy. We have that and more. We have the ability to borrow out of the water and sewer fund, but your sewer availability rates pay for capital improvement. So anytime we borrow, that's paying the debt service. Anytime we build, that's paying for the build. So sewer availability fees, which were changed just last year, will remain the same. If I can give you a cautionary note, however, this week I was delivered the updated sewer, our sewer options for metro and other major builds. And I'm having the numbers rerun through the models to make sure our availability rates are right sized for, to pay for those, those upgrades when we need them. So that's to be continued and we'll come back and talk about it once those come out of the models. Water basic service charge, again, a 7 cent increase on the basic service charge, a 10 cent increase on the, on the, on the, the water itself, and then a peak rate increase of 15 cents. Again, this is on schedule with the plan that we, that we brought to you and you all adopted last year. Again, water availability fees were adjusted at that same time and they remain the same. Some of the construction we're looking at in the water and sewer capital improvement fund, we're looking at some Center Street construction, which is a, this, this is an important thing ultimately for us down at H Talk, believe it or not. This is one of the mains we're going to use to supply water in that direction. We have some, we need to do some signs down on Wilshire Drive. We have some water vault upgrades here in the downtown, for the downtown, and they need us, they need to replace our single axle dump, single axle dump truck at $140,000. Those are all included in there and that will be paid for out of the water and sewer That's on the water side. Now let's go to the sewer side. Again, we don't like water and sewer mixing, so here we got the sewer. We have a $1.8 million in sewer projects. We are, we need a sewer pump station. We are looking at relining the Sugarland Run main trunk. If, for those that don't know, Sugarland Run main trunk is the main sewer conveyance for the town, out of the town, out to the Potomac Interceptor, which then goes down to DC's Blue Plains. So again, one of the things we always look at, and then we have a, a great program where we're constantly shooting cameras through lines. We don't want groundwater in our sewer lines because we have to pay to treat groundwater. That's, that's penny, that's pound foolish. So part of this is to reline the ones we see that may be problematic and we're relining both that and the Locust Street sewer line as well. $640,000 at the end is various master plan improvements that we can go into greater detail if, if you need. Golf course fund, golf course fund is about one and a half million dollars. It's a 3.8% increase. This is mainly the personnel and golf cart replacement. Gene has waited patiently for a couple of years to replace a series of his golf cart fleet. And this year we thought we could fit it in. And again, the golf course fund, much like the water and sewer fund, is a self-sustaining, no tax dollars go to it. It has to be user fee based. And so we could fit it into his business model for next year and we were able to give him the golf court, carts he needs after waiting patiently for a couple of years to get there. Cemetery fund, also a self-sustaining fund. Everything out of the cemetery fund is generated from cemetery fund. There is no tax dollars going to the cemetery fund. This is a, just a modest reduction. This is a flat budget as well. We're looking, the main drivers here is a master plan update because we have an area of the cemetery, eventually we would like to open up and redo and open up. So we're, we're looking at updating the master plan to do that. And the heat, Dave Roscoe came in and wanted a tractor, a tractor, he's needing a new tractor for this or various other things. And then after sitting there talking to him for a while, we realized, you know, if we gave him a couple of attachments, he could do a whole lot more with it. And so what you see here is tractor with attachments and that is next year's cemetery fund. Highlights of the downtown parking fund, a million dollar contribution to the parking garage in the downtown. We have some debt service for bonding we already took for the downtown and we have operation maintenance of our current parking lots at about $15,000. So going back to the, what is embedded in this budget that meets the priorities and guidance that you've given to me. So those things that advance the 2035 vision, what you see here is we, for our parking enforcement official, he doesn't need to have anything, his, his vehicle needs are not nearly as dramatic as our officers on the street. So we saw an opportunity to get for him an electric non-emergency police vehicle to replace the age, the retired police cruiser that we gave him to see if his, if he was going to make enough money to pay a salary, which he now is making about three times his salary in that vehicle. We also are going to continue doing some LED retrofitting projects in town. If you notice coming into the garage tonight, those are all LED lights. They weren't about a month and a half ago. They are now. We are continuing down that path. We are continuing to fund the parking garage and, and creating funds in the budget for closing when we get to that point, hopefully sooner than later. We also are looking for an enterprise software system for the Department of Community Development and Public Works. This is highly important and very near and dear to me in my previous life as an IT director because the Department of Community Works seem to always be the forgotten group when we were doing technology upgrades for various reasons. And this is something they have needed to allow for electronic plan submission, to improve their workflows. It is also going to replace the building permit system that we have to retire over in the Department of Public Works. So actually this work is underway now, but the, the funding that we're asking for in this budget will complete the project in next fiscal year. You wanted to fund activities that will demonstrate a commitment to the town employees. In this budget, you have a 2% pay for performance, you have a 1.3% COLA and we have, we've given the sworn officers another 1.7% to equalize them out to what is happening with the county. Also, we are sponsoring two, we are sponsoring two of our employees that have shown leadership acumen, a commitment to the town, and we are going to sponsor them through the Northern Virginia Local Government Fellows Program at George Mason University to get their MPA. This is a program that the town made a similar investment in me about 12 or 13 years ago.
And it's a Masters of Public Administration?
Masters of Public Administration. The town made a similar investment in me in the second George Mason cohort to go through this. It is a, a, an incredible opportunity for the, the, the staff members that we select. And when we put the call out for staff members, we had nine show up for two slots. And I, I, I think there's some sort of gladiator games or some, some sort of Hunger Games thing going on to figure out who's going, but, but no, seriously, this is a phenomenal program that I highly recommend it and it will go to two, two employees that show a great deal of leadership acumen and we want to keep with this town for a very long time. And again, it, it made a difference in me. I would not have been prepared for this job had I not taken that program. We've also increased funding for educational reimbursement. That is for all degrees. One of the drivers behind this, I know Maggie, Chief Maggie DeBoer at the Police Department is putting a premium on officer advancement and career progression. And a big piece of that career progression, and I see a couple of my officers in the back, big piece of that is getting your degree. So I encourage, highly encourage them to take advantage of the educational reimbursements. Again, as part of, of just making sure we're investing in our workforce for long-term. We also maintain funding and levels of leadership training. Last year I upped that, I upped the budget category for leadership training. I think it's very important for us to take our frontline supervisors, the ones that we're really tasking to make things happen out on the streets and making sure that they aren't just the best refuse worker when they become a supervisor, or they aren't the best water and sewer person when they become a supervisor, but they actually are equipped with the skills to lead their teams, to be the best possible employee we can have out there. This funding is maintained in this budget. As far as continue working towards updating budget policy. Although we decoupled the meals tax from the linkage that had happened before, that was a, that was a semantics change in the wording of the budget that will be a policy document if you adopt. We are recommending increase the meals tax at 1%. This is driven because of the shift we had in B pole. That is, that, that was a game changer for us in our budget negotiations or in our budget discussions. And it's something we didn't take lightly, but I think there was room for that revenue area to grow. It's stable. It, it has always remained stable and I think that, that, that was the most appropriate place for that money for capital and, but you will be the final arbiters of that decision. We are bringing consultant looking at user fees and cost allocation models, again, going back to the Parks and Rec, but also going to what we're doing as we grow into metro as well. We are identifying lifecycle maintenance costs and we are identifying strategies of how to control those as they are going up. We have moved the relative appropriations that were truly operational out of the CIP. We've kept the CIP purely capital and any operational expenses now in the, in the general fund and it's in the operating budget each year. And we'll talk about that every year that we're standing here talking about this. And we, and with that, it allowed us to incorporate the philosophy of using one-time reserves for capital. If we have a one-time, only one-time charge, we can use a one-time reserve for it, but we shouldn't be using it to pay for an operational expense like vehicle replacement, building maintenance or things like that. So it allows us to do that. To address the critical drivers, to offset the 1.5 million dollar decline in B pole revenue in O and M, we took some reductions in the general fund of about $400,000 to offset that area, plus we had some room for growth based on other revenues shifting more towards the positive. We went into the capital question where we reduced down to under a million dollars in capital this year and we proposed a meals tax increase to make up for the rest of it at $900,000. We've addressed macro level budgeting issues. Again, the equipment and vehicle Again, the equipment and vehicle rotations, the building maintenance, the road repaving, and the technology upgrades are now existing only in the general fund. They're not passing back and forth between the capital improvement fund, the general fund, and, and various other ways. They all reside in the same place, and I think it's going to provide us with better management of all of those projects across the board. That is the budget that I proposed to you. We still have some outstanding things that we're going to talk about at the next work session, some other opportunities, some other funding priorities that didn't make it into this budget that we, that we have discussed. We're going to talk about, obviously, grants to a more finer point. I'm sorry, they're not grants, they're donations to a much finer point at the next work session, but this is the base budget that I presented, and I'm here, but also, my budget team is here, and most department heads are sitting around the room at various points. If you have any questions about any of it, I'm sure we can certainly address them.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for the town manager? Mr. McKenna?
You don't have to refer to it, but on slide 21, you referred to the water sewer models. When do you expect those to get back to us?
We just, we just sent those out because I just, I just got the report Wednesday.
Okay.
So, less than five business days ago, and I know Jenny is sending them out to her folks to be, to be crunched.
Okay.
We'll set a work session item up when we start getting that data back because we got to, there's another piece to it. We have to meet with Fairfax County to get some input from what, what they, there might be some way for them to cost share some of this, depending on what we do, what they want to do, and so, we, we have an upcoming meeting with the county to talk about that in addition to the models coming back, but we'll set a work session. As soon as we have all that information together, we will be back to you.
That was my follow-up question, so thanks.
Thank you. Other questions for the town manager? Yes, ma'am. So, we seem to have taken a lot of hits lately, and they just seem to be keeping coming. If we do the 1% meals tax, is it likely that we'll be able to absorb any more? I mean, we've had some...
I, I think so. Again, one of the things that's, what you're seeing here is a cash flow plan, a money coming in, money going out sort of plan that is before you. What it doesn't take into account is we're in a strong fiscal position. We, we have a, we just recently, as part of our bond rating exercise, upped our undesignated fund balance reserve from 10 to 20%. We were in position to do that. Again, an enviable position. I know some of my counterparts in other jurisdictions are struggling to get to 20%. We were able to take a pen and do it, and just make it happen, and bring it before you. You adopted it, and it put us in a very, very advantageous position when talking to the bond rating agencies about our fiscal position. In addition to 20%, we have, we're even above that 20%. We also have some pockets of contingency money for these things sitting out there. What I'm afraid of is not that one time, but to your point, they keep coming? Well, we got to keep filling those, those pockets of money back up as we're spending out, and that's where I'm deeply concerned about over the long term. But I, I think we're right now, for the information we know, for the patterns we're seeing, I feel fairly confident that that's enough for us right now. But again, one of the things I've cautioned you, you all individually and collectively is, there are a lot of unknowns out there, and not to pull all the arrows out of the quiver and shoot them at once because then you have nothing left in there should you need it. So, I think this is a measured step. I think it will do it based on the information we have today, but I want to make sure we have something in our hip pocket should we need to do something else in the future to make up for that.
And can you tell me, our loss of revenues in business, what is it, what does BPO stand for?
Business Professional Occupational License.
So, that's the, that's the fee that people pay, that's, or that businesses pay, that's a percentage of their revenues?
Grocery receipts.
Their grocery receipts. So, is it...
I, I have signs being flashed.
Is there anything that we did that caused our, our business receipts to go down?
No, it was nothing that we had done. It was just, like I said, it's a complex tax. Again, businesses come and go. When they come, it takes about four years to equalize out their, their, their tax payment, and during that time, it's, it puts and takes. They, they pay us, we reconcile, we pay, have to pay them back. If they shift business categories, that can certainly change the way in which they're assessed. If at some point they challenge you there and they are accurate in their challenge, we have to refund them money, and we have, we have a revenue reserve category for those types of refunds that are sitting out in our, in our fiscal picture that we, I can't remember the last time we tapped it, but it, I know that we have had to pay out businesses before. So, it's truly nothing that we have done. It's just the nature of that tax. It's very volatile. That's one of the reasons why we've never budgeted to its fullest take. And so, when we took the 1.5 million, Jenny came in, she was all worked up, she goes, we're 1.5 million down, this is why. It was a $400,000 budgetary hit to us.
So, we'd only budgeted some of it?
Right. It's a capital hit to us, but capital's elective, and we can choose not to do the capital projects, but I'm here to just tell you that we have three pretty significant capital projects coming up that have to happen if we are to get things like the Penzance project up off the ground.
And I've asked a number of times of our delegate and Senator whether or not the revenues that have been taken from the transportation budget that funded some of those projects, whether that will go back after the, the metro money is, is figured out, and everybody is pretty up in the air about whether or not that's possible.
It is up in the air. I know, because there's these significant projects elsewhere. I know Governor Northam talks a lot about the I-81 corridor, and there are other needs in the state that they're looking at too, that are in woeful need if you ever try, try, I, I-81, it's, you know, it's, my, my daughter will learning how to drive it, threw her the keys, I told her to drive home from James Madison, and she looked at me like, are you out of your mind? No, it, it's terrible, and I know money's going in that direction. Again, I can't say what the legislature's going to do or what the governor's going to do in, in future years. I just know right now, the competitive nature of those grants is, the dynamic has changed dramatically, and our staff that's devoted to looking at that is concerned. It is a level of concern. Even when we were looking at these shortfalls, he's like, the cycles, what we can get, what is, what we're competing with, how they're scored, will this project score enough to get there? It, it's leaving us in a very uneasy feeling.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions for the town manager?
Thank you. So, again, I'm going to call separate public hearings on each of, let me find my list, make sure I tell you. I guess the bottom line is, I think we probably have a lot of people here who are here to speak about the, the grants or the donations to nonprofits. The, the public hearing to address that is number 13, which is the fiscal planning document, so that'll be a couple items down the road. So, this is a public hearing. All comments that have been received have been entered into the record. I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 19009, which is to levy taxes on real estate and manufactured homes and other subjects for the fiscal year budget. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on the proposed ordinance to levy taxes on real estate and manufactured homes? Yes, ma'am? You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Ambita 631 Oak Street. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't, I need less than 30 seconds. I just want to point out, as, as is good to remember at every single discussion of real estate tax rate, that the county assessments this year are up approximately averaging 2.36%. So, it, it's nice to keep in mind that even though that the rate is staying level, well, every single person in this room will be writing a bigger check to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this piece, the levying of real estate taxes? Okay, seeing none, we will keep the public hearing open, but I will ask for a motion to continue to a date of April 23rd.
I'll second.
Okay, so Baker. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, and just to clarify, Madam Town Attorney, since this is to continue, this does not require a roll call vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, if there is no further discussion, I will call the question to continue made by Ms. Baker, seconded by Mr. McKenna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Thank you very much. Next up, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 1910. This is the, the ordinance to amend Chapter 30 Finance and Taxation Meals Tax for a possible increase in the meal tax up to 4%. The current rate is 2.5%. The, the recommendation is to raise it by 1%. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item, the meals tax? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Brenda Wickman, 925 Vine Street. I appreciate very much the explanation in the previous presentation of what the meals tax revenue would be for. I would like to exercise a word of caution. I think people think another half a cent, not a big deal, meals tax. I think it is something that we need to be very mindful of. I have friends who live in the town of Vienna who don't buy food in the town of Vienna if they can avoid it because they can go to Oakden and not have to worry about it. We have a lot of great options, but there are also a lot of great options in Reston. There are a lot of great options in Sterling. If you're a commuter like I am, I can stop in Reston, I can stop in Herndon. I like to keep my money in the town of Herndon, but it does add up. I'm also concerned about the wording in this proposal where it talks about food not necessarily prepared in an establishment. I'm not sure what that means. It sounds like just a food tax. So, with that, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. We can clarify that. Ms. Data?
Thanks. Still Ambita, still 631 Oak Street. A little bit of history here. The creation of the town's meals tax was premised on preempting a then proposed Fairfax County meals tax. That code would protect, the code protected towns that already had meals taxes in place from becoming subject to subsequent county taxes. The subsequent county tax never materialized. However, the, the town meals tax persisted. It's metastasized into a meal, into a cash cow. We're suffering right now, we are suffering, believe me, from commercial office retail and restaurant vacancies, from exoduses, and the constant threat of increasing the meals tax is, is burdensome to our restaurants, and they're a vibrant part of our community. I urge you to not just not raise, but I encourage you to rescind it to a nominal placeholder. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on the meals tax levy? Anyone? Okay, thank you. I will ask for a motion to continue this public hearing to the same date of April 23rd.
Summude.
Okay. I have a motion to continue made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Mr. DeCall. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Thank you. And finally, we will, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 1911. This is a chapter to amend utilities to increase the uses charges for sanitary water and sewer. Is, is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Everybody loves water and sewer. Okay. Seeing none, I will move to council level, looking for a motion to continue once again to April 23rd.
Summude.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to continue made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Okay, finally, we are to item number 13, which is Resolution 19G31, to adopt a fiscal planning resolution for the fiscal year 2020 budget, and we will concurrently have a public hearing for the following ordinance, which is to appropriate the funds for the budget. Is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak on these items? Once again, state your name and address for the record. Come on down. Up to three minutes. When the red light comes on, please wrap up. Sorry, I've had to say it so many times, I'm getting myself confused.
I'll do my best, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Michael O'Reilly, 761 Monroe Street here in Herndon. I'm here tonight as the Chairman of the Board of Arts Herndon. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'm here supported by two other board members, Don Owens and Peggy O'Reilly, who they tell me they have my back. Our President and CEO is also here, Joe Ormesher, and I'm certain if I misspeak, she'll let me know. She's not shy. Arts Herndon and its predecessors have a long history of working with the town. Certainly, we work with, we provide services at Hands-on Art in the Herndon Festival that have for a number of years. We also had the opportunity to work with the mayor to go to the county to ask for the county's participation in our downtown development, and I'm happy to say that that, that effort realized a $1.2 million grant and the establishment of an economic development fund, which our supervisor was happy to, to do, and with the mayor's leadership, we were able to get those funds. So, we have a long history. We're happy about that, and I'm here tonight to tell you that the arts are alive and well in Herndon. We continue to operate art space. We do have difficulties in that we're not sure where we'll be in six months. We're delighted that Comstock is moving forward. It gives us more sense of urgency to try to figure out where we'll be in six or eight months so that we can get established and we can continue to operate. We're currently operating and, and holding monthly improv events with a group called Calamity Improv. Pop-up theater projects with Dark Horse Theater, Experimental Theater in association with Evan Hoffman and Next Up Theater. We're doing monthly open mic nights. This is all at Artspace. Poetry prose and music with Mike Maggio, who's here this evening. Monthly bluegrass and roots music, monthly cabaret concerts, monthly design and wine, which I understand is very popular. I haven't made it to one of those yet, but we've got a couple, currently, we have there, it just went up, is the Herndon Pyramid Schools exhibit. It's the children from around our community, and that's going to be followed by something called Mind Heart Vision, and that's the Herndon High School seniors. And then the one after that is one that I'm excited about every year. This is our 15th year of doing it, and that is one that was started when Jerry Conley was at SAIC, and that's our annual tech competition, and that's countywide. Every high school in the county has an opportunity with their teachers and art department to do tech art, and they do some unbelievable things on the computers and with photography. And you all should come out on May 15th when we have the award ceremony from 6:00 to 8:00. You're welcome to come, and we'd love to see you there. One of the things that we'll be doing after that will be during Arts Week, October 19, we'll be having the Second Annual Children's Literary Festival. And last year, I know many of you were there. I know that many of you did the readings with the kids in the library, and I know that the mayor's excited about being there this year, so we're looking forward to putting that on as well.
Yes, sir. Could you try to wrap up?
I will.
Thank you, sorry. There's a lot of people out there.
I, I understand. I will wrap up with a comment that the pastor of St. Joe's frequently says to his congregation on Sundays, at least when I go, he always says it, and when you think about the arts, I'd like you to remember that. Please be as generous as your means allow. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward?
Thank you. I am so honored to be here. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the whole council, and everybody in this room. Does that help? My name is Melanie Stanley. I live at 1228 Parkstream Terrace, Herndon, Virginia. I have been a citizen of Herndon for over 30 years, and I love this town. I am here to speak about the arts and also to talk about art space. I have to almost stand on my tiptoes to reach this, but anyway, I appreciate the support and recognition that the council has offered throughout the years to the arts, and I'm very aware of what you all do for us. And as an instructor there, as a local artist, as a retired Fairfax County School Administrator and educator, I am really appreciative of what the arts afford to all of us. One of the things is that it's, you know, art kind of offers a haven and a safe place and a respite from just our busy hectic world, and it kind of transcends those everyday responsibilities that we have and anxieties that we have. It's a language that we can all speak. It's a global language, and it's a way that we can interact with one another. can interact with one another and build community among the residents in Herndon. Art space has offered so many opportunities for children and adults from all ethnicities and religious backgrounds and cultural backgrounds to come together and speak the language of art, and to enjoy the poetry readings, the art exhibits, the wine and designs, all of the things that go on, the music, the theater. Art space offers so much to this community, and without art, it's like we lose a part of our heart, we lose a part of our language, we lose a part of our culture that is so important in forming what and who Herndon is. So I am asking for your continued support. Art Space has so many wonderful plans for this community, for all of you in this room, for all of you sitting there, for our children. It offers so many community opportunities that we want to make sure we can partake in. So thank you so much for what you've done, and thank you for continuing to support the arts in Herndon.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Who else would like to come forward and speak? You have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mike Maggio, 1549 Coomburgh Court, Herndon, Virginia, 20170. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm here as a poet, a fiction writer, a performance artist, the vice, Northern Regional Vice President of the Poetry Society of Virginia, as well as an adjunct professor at Northern Virginia Community College, and as has been mentioned, I host the poetry readings at Art Space. I wanted to speak to three things related to art that I think art brings to our community, and that is community, quality of life, and business impact. I believe, first of all, that we have created a wonderful community of poets and artists here in Herndon. I have personally brought the poet laureate of Virginia, all the way from William &amp; Mary came and read for us. I had the Growing Kids Therapy Center. They were featured at our open mic. We've done lots of wonderful things. The community really appreciates it. We have between 30 and 50 people coming to our event on a monthly basis, from Herndon and from outside of Herndon. Now, if you've ever been to a poetry reading, you will know that the most we ever get is 10 people, and that includes the poets. So bringing 30 to 50 people is a big deal. Second, quality of life. What is quality of life? We have our, you know, our bike path, we have parks, we have wonderful restaurants. Art adds to that quality of life. It attracts people to our town, and that in turn brings an impact on our businesses because the people that come here go to the restaurants before our events and go to the restaurants after our events. They shop, and some of them have never been here, and they tell me, "This is a wonderful town." And having lived here since 1994, I can vouch for that. This is a wonderful town. Thank you for your support for Art Space and for the arts, and I hope that you will continue to give us your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward? Yes, sir?
My name is Evan Hoffman. I'm the producing artistic director of Next Stop Theater, which is located at 269 Sunset Park Drive. Let me start by saying that I do not believe that mine or any nonprofit in the, in the town is entitled to town grant funding, but I do believe we are deserving of it. I also know that this council knows the value of art, but at the last public hearing, Councilmember Baker raised some fair concerns about the grants, and I wanted to quickly address those concerns for the good of the whole council and for the taxpayers of Herndon. Let me also say before I speak, I only speak for, I speak for no organization other than Next Stop Theater. Regarding the higher funding level for Next Stop versus other organizations, the town provides us with no guidance on appropriate funding request levels. Without any specific guidance, we simply ask for what we believe will help grow our rapidly expanding artistic and philanthropic work in this community, balanced with what we estimate to be respectful financial sustainability for our organization and for the town. So we at Next Stop, in that light, would fully welcome and encourage the council in the future to explore implementing new grant processes that would standardize the process and provide us with greater guidance on what the council feels is appropriate funding. Furthermore, given the recent, what I believe are highly laudable efforts of this council to strengthen transparency in government, we would also welcome a process that increases the transparency of our requesting process and oversight of our utilization of whatever funds you choose to give us. Also, regarding the amount of funding requested specifically by our organization this year, Arts Fairfax, the county's arts granting organization, allows requests of up to 15% of previous year expenses in grant applications. The Virginia Commission for the Arts allows 10% of previous year expenses for grant applications. This year, Next Stop has asked the town for 8.4% of our previous year expenses in our funding application. I would also like to freely acknowledge that since 2012, my organization's town grant has increased by about 200%. However, our annual expenses and revenue during the same time have increased by 380%. Also, since 2012, which was when I became involved in the administration of the organization, the town has granted us a total of $156,000 in grants over that full time, but my organization has personally invested $190,000 of our own institutional savings into the organization. We have raised an additional $638,000 in contributions, and we have earned $2.52 million through our productions and our programs. So we are pulling our weight and largely and predominantly fund ourselves. I will close by saying that I know how hard budgeting and financial management can be, and I would humbly and respectfully remind you that Herndon's arts organizations are not located in the small, albeit awesome, town of Herndon because it's necessarily the most financially sound decision, but we are here because we believe in our mission to serve this community, and we will continue to do everything in our power to continue to give you confidence in supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
John Boylan, Place of Business, 730 Elden Street. As the President of the Chamber of Commerce, I just want to remind you a little bit about history, and perhaps you might have read about 1400s, when the City Council for Florence, Italy went and purchased, a large purchase at the time, an enormous piece of marble. That marble was finally worked on by a sculptor, a 26-year-old Michelangelo, and he created, he gets all the attention, but it was the town council that had the foresight to think about that kind of investment. I think the same thing's true today, right? So wonderful news about the possibility for the tennis bubble, new golf carts, two sports I enjoy. However, we need to look at the rest of the community. And if you look at tells throughout the state and actually throughout the country, you look for a healthy region, a healthy city, it's because of the part of that is not only sports, but also for the arts. And so I think the arts is an investment, not only to the arts itself, but also to the people, and I'd suggest it's actually anti-drugs and anti-gang, because it takes the kids off the streets, gives them the opportunity. Wonderful program here, really proud of it, and as we look throughout the Dulles region, we have something pretty special in Herndon that even draws more people. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. It's always good to see you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak on these items? Yes, sir, Mr. Owens.
My name's Don Owens, and I have a business across the street at 847 Station Street. My wife and I have operated an insurance business for 38 years in Herndon, and I just, just wanted to step up to say from the business perspective, how we feel about it. We don't feel that the business model belongs in something like this because it's a quality of life issue. You can put numbers to it, and there are studies done that say, for every dollar you invest in the arts, you get $3 back in other revenue. So you can look for those, hopefully we could provide those for our organization. I joined Arts Herndon last summer, and we hired Joe, and I think we've got an inflection point, where we've got someone who has the connections and the resume to help really boost this. What's, the groundwork's been terrific, the volunteers and all the people over the years, but I think we're at an inflection point. And just like preparing for that development out there at the metro, it's the same thing, let's lay the groundwork. There's going to be a great art center here in town, and there are plenty of programs, and the quality of what's happened here has been fantastic. What Evan does with Next Stop is just first class. You know, we, my wife and I go there all the time, and it's wonderful that to have that, it's right here, we have tickets to the Kennedy Center too, and I think we get more value sometimes here. So I mean that, it's really terrific. Certainly, put the value to it, it's terrific. But as far as the quality of life, we're concerned with our employees. We have 50-some employees that we worry about the quality of their life and what's going to keep them happy. We have tens of thousands of clients in the area of business, we have 3,000 businesses insured, and we worry about their employees. So from a business perspective, we worry about the quality of life, and it's not the business model that I worry about for paying my budget and my payroll. It's one about that I know comes back, and it's an indirect correlation, but I appreciate your support, and as Michael put it, Mike O'Reilly, whatever it fits in your hearts, we appreciate any support you give us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to come forward? Is there anyone else would like to come forward on this item? Okay. Thank you all for coming. So where are we? Here we go. So we had concurrent public hearings. Okay, we will take separate action on each of these items to continue. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing on Resolution 19G31, which is the fiscal planning resolution?
Second.
Did we state the date certain, Mayor?
I don't know. A date certain of April 23rd, thank you. I'm not sure if I did or not, it's all running together. So this is to continue to a date certain of April 23rd. Discussion on that motion. All right. That was made by Mr. Delagula and seconded by Mr. DeCall. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. And finally, is there a motion to continue the public hearing on ordinance 19012, which is to appropriate the funds and to implement the pay plan and reserve ongoing capital funding for this fiscal year to a date certain of April 23rd?
Summude.
Second. Okay, discussion on the motion. Yes, sir.
Just want to thank everyone for staying, like to say what you had to say, appreciate it.
Yep. Congrats. Other comments? Okay, that was a motion to continue made by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Ms. Baker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. All right, so we'll see you on a date certain of April 23rd. That brings us to our one general item, which is ordinance 19013, to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, Section 2.5 of the Code of the Town of Herndon, to add a preamble, additional language to ethical responsibilities and specific references to the town charter and the town code. We've received a few comments on these, this item, has been entered into the record. I will recognize our town attorney to outline the proposed ordinance. Madam Town Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. As council knows, back in December of 2015, the then-town council adopted our current Code of Ethics. That was the first Code of Ethics that the town of Herndon ever had for council, and had been what council had been operating under until February of this year, when the incoming council asked that staff help them look at possible language to improve the current Code of Ethics. And back on February 19th, council at one of their work sessions, we had a discussion, which I led, where I described the modes of authority for councils in the state. We talked about how our current charter provides the means by which we can, a council can adopt a code to govern their behavior. Specifically, the charter section is 3.9, and that allows you to establish your own rules and procedure and take appropriate action against your own members. I specifically, we discussed in that meeting that our charter, unlike some other limited charters in the state, does not provide for the removal of council members, but that there were a few sections in the Code of Virginia that addressed removal. Specifically, Section 15.2-1400 permits governing bodies to fine or punish a member for disorderly behavior. Section 24.2-231 allows a, upon petition of voters in a district, to petition the circuit court to have a person removed from office if they are sentenced for commission of certain crimes, and those crimes are limited to some fairly significant misdemeanors and other types of crimes that aren't addressed by Section 24.2-233, which allows the removal of elected and certain appointed officers by the courts for conviction of persons, or sorry, for persons that are convicted and sentenced of certain very serious crimes, like felonies and other crimes against persons that are listed therein. And finally, Section 2.2, 3103 of the Code of Virginia, that specifically allows punishment of a public officer for using their office to retaliate or threaten to retaliate against any person for expressing views. So we talked about all the authority that was allowed, as well as the authority that you are, have adopted, or that was adopted in 2015, in Town Code Section 2-5, which is the current Code of Ethics. What you have before you this evening is the product of the discussion on February 19th, the product of a subsequent discussion on March 5th, the product of the work session where you received a draft of the current ordinances before you, and then again tonight. The amendments that have been made to the current Code of Ethics include addition of a preamble reflecting the values of the town, and this is a fairly significant preamble, and as I've discussed with you previously, and you have discussed amongst yourself in some, I would say, rather robust discussions, represents what you feel is the, are the values of the town, and a description of why you are adopting amendments to this Code of Ethics and why you believe it's important. The other second amendment is the creation of numbered paragraphs for ethical responsibilities. Previously, there were not numbered paragraphs. The first numbered paragraph is the faithful and impartial performance of duties, followed by number two, the demonstration of integrity and respect, number three, following established town policies and procedures, and then of course, four, following the law. And all of those seem like things that are intuitive, but I think, and I believe you indicated, that breaking those out into those four categories better highlighted what was contained in those paragraphs. Additionally, I have added, and I believe, I have added at your request, the citations to certain town charter and town code sections, as well as, there were already included state code sections that are applicable. And with that, I believe this reflects what you have requested, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town attorney? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion. Ms. Friedrichs?
Madam Mayor, I move...
Microphone?
Microphone.
You help me with that. I'll help you. Good lord.
I move approval of 19-0-13.
I will second.
Discussion on the motion. Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
I think it addressed all the issues that we were aware of, not aware of anything it doesn't address that needs to be. So, I think it's a great effort, and not hearing any more content needed, I like it.
Further discussion? Mr. Delagula?
So, I think we were going to, at a future point, add a social component, social media.
Yes.
Correct? So, there is that. This didn't include any remedies, but I think having put in some of the state code, that kind of spells to where that would go to. So, I just wanted to go on the record saying that we're still missing the social media component.
Right. And I believe the town attorney, do you want to expound on that for the public?
I will. Something that is in the forefront of everyone's mind is the recent case with our neighbor that ended in the Fourth Circuit. In order to inform a very important policy, the social media policy, I have discussed with you the wisdom of allowing a little bit more time for the state law group and the international law group, but I'll say it's pretty much the United States, the international municipal lawyers, to complete their work on some draft ordinances, model ordinances, and share their work with us. So, we will be putting that forward, hopefully, later this year, if not sooner.
Thank you for that. Did you have further comments? No. Vice Mayor, I believe you had some comments.
Yes. Thank you for all your work you did on putting all this together. And is it on?
I can't tell. Is that better? Yes.
I never can see the light. Sorry. Thank you to staff for putting all their time and energy into pulling this out, and I do hope that we have this on the website so that people can see it, as that was a question. But as a member of Rotary, I have my four rules, and I go by those. When I was raising my kids, I told them, "Don't embarrass me in public, and I'll do the same for you." And I plan to go out and try and put myself out there in a way that will not embarrass the town. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. DeKal.
I think it's a great stepping stone, I would say, because we have something now, and we can always come back, review, amend as needed, because we don't know what happens five years, 10 years down the line, you know? People's perception, the way we communicate, the social media, the technology, the government, many things changes, and based on that, we can always come in, change, add, amend. So, I think it's a great stepping stone, I would say, and thank you to the staff, Madam Matony, for working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anyone? Okay. I do look forward to the social media component. I think that's getting more complicated, and certainly with what happened next door. I'm grateful to have the expertise of the other experts on this. I think we spent an inordinate amount of time on this, and we don't have, I think that we already had most of this in place. So, I look forward to freeing up our town attorney's schedule to work on other things now that we are going to hopefully pass this this evening. We had a motion made by Ms. Friedrich, seconded by Mr. McKenna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
There is no discussion on the motion. Never mind. Okay. Made by the vice mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business.
We move. We move. I'm sorry. I'm going to ask for a point of order. I can't figure out who said it. Who made the motion? Was it the vice mayor or Ms. Baker? I'll just pick one.
Madam Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we stand adjourned at 9:54 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.